I will call to order this November 18th meeting of the Plan and Zoning Commission. First, welcome to our new commissioners Monahan and Capozzi. And Commissioner Delgado is now a member. Welcome. Looking forward to serving with you all. First up, we have meeting minutes from October 28th and November 13th. Commissioner Delgado, I know you were not present for those, are you?
I figured I'd stay.
Okay. Commissioner Seibert, do you want to sit in on this since you were there? And Commissioners Capozzi and Monahan. And so I think we can, we have enough votes to.
Five, we have five, that's good.
All right, can I have a motion on the meeting minutes? Commissioner Levy, move to approve. You, second Commissioner Seibert.
That looks fine to me.
Commissioner Seibert, any comments? Commissioner Braun.
I have a comment on October 28th when we met. We talked about the October 14th minutes at that time, and I had raised some issues about the P O C D and I had requested some information to be provided to us. And I think that should be detailed in the minutes because what I asked it sort of dovetails right into the P O C D issue that we have also on the agenda tonight, which is I'd asked what notifications we had provided so into the statute. I also asked for the entire P O C D history file to be put back on the website. It's been taken down. The only thing up there is the P O C D that we voted on on October 7th that the town attorney has now indicated we did not approve. And I also asked for a detailing of the specific edits that were made at the October 7th meeting when we voted. So I don't have an answer to that, I don't think. There's been so many emails. But I do feel like that communication was important because it relates to the P O C D. And that communication, I, we discussed, I think at length, our October 28th meeting. I would like that to be corrected in the minutes for October 28th that that request was made.
Commissioner, Director Harrigan, you know. Did you get that?
I did. Normally, our meeting minutes are not verbatim minutes, they are action minutes. So normally, we don't provide that significant level of detail that you've reflected. So just, just as a matter of practice for our minutes. It, it, it details the actions provided.
So those were actions that I requested at that time. I guess, can I ask now if any of those pieces of information have been, I haven't gotten them. Can they be provided? Have they been provided? I think we need those if we're going to talk about P O C D anyways.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to kind of summarize what has, what has occurred with the P O C D in terms of the statutory requirements, the referrals that were made and received back from different agencies. Because we did meet all of the statutory requirements in terms of the notification to the council of governments, to the Board of Selectmen who chose not to report reports back. We also posted it with the town clerk as required by statute. And on our website as required by statute. So we met all of the statutory requirements per the state statute.
So none of those around the website, because the only, only item on the P O C D update project website, which has had many things in it over the past six or seven years, is the P O C D draft that we voted on on October 7th. There's nothing else on the website. None of those notices, no letters, no input, no prior versions, no drafts, no nothing. So it didn't have to be provided to us. So the specific items I asked for again were the notifications we made to different areas. Board of Selectmen, I think Harbor Management, we gave them notification, Metro Cod we had to give. And so I would like to see that anyway, because I think we need to know that we did follow the statutory requirements. And also, can the, why, is there some reason why the whole file is not on the website anymore? I feel it's important that we should have the history of the P O C D and it's all public record. It should be there.
It's still in, it's still on the website and I provided you with a link when you made that request. That provided you to the date that we discussed the plan of conservation and development with all of those files still intact for the
How does somebody find that if they didn't get that link in an email? Because I couldn't find it when I looked.
The link that is attached to the top of every agenda.
Yes.
I couldn't find it in there. Okay. So if it's in there, then the whole file has been restored.
The file never left.
I couldn't get it. When I go to the TPZ department website, which has the update.
Right.
There's not, you can't get to it from there. That's where it should be. So people can find it without having to look up an agenda. I mean, it used to always be there. You could go to the TPZ department, not commission, website and the P O C D update link went to the whole, whole thing. Now it only goes to the October 7th draft. We voted on. So although, I don't know why there's two locations for the history of the P O C D.
I think there's one location that has the backup materials for everything we've done, including both the P O C D and the the applications that we've heard.
Well, it used to be in the same place. So I, I'm going to ask that that be restored to a place where the public can find it. Without having to go to a link in an agenda.
Commissioner Monahan.
I would also like to be able to review transpired on the P O C D. Pull back all the that's come about.
Okay, I will. So again, the material is all there. I think we can discuss further if there, if it makes sense to do anything else on the website. I don't think we need Commissioner Randolph.
Point of clarification. So my understanding is the real is on the website. It always has been on the website. But it may not be something that is easily found because it's, it's filed by the days that we moved up to the P O C D meetings. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'm happy to put it back on the website. I just don't want to confuse the general public by having too much information instead of the most timely information. So it's a, it's a little, I mean, for those of you who have searched for different things on websites, sometimes too much information is too much information. So you know, I'd rather, I'd rather have the most current P O C D draft on the website instead of all of the background. I'm happy for the commission to be able to provide all that background material. But you know, we've reviewed it so many times. Then again, I don't want to confuse the general public by still keeping all of that on the primary page of the website.
We can just say historical information and the link and it's down with dates.
Commissioner Randolph.
A point of clarification. So all of the information we've used to arrive at the P O C D has been and is on the website. The page that is in question has the most recent information as a point of clarification, just to make sure that that is most available to the public. So they don't see multiple predecessor drafts. They see the current. But all the information is there, has been there, correct? And so I would respectfully request Commissioner Braun that you go to the office or do a Webex meeting with staff to find out to, so they instruct you where to find this information.
Well, if it's a link through an agenda, yes, I could find it, but I did not find it easily and I have not been able to find it. I don't think the public can find it. This is a matter of public transparency. And anybody can look at drafts and see the date right on the front page. In fact, the one that's up there now says adopted October 7th, effective October 11th, even though it wasn't adopted on October 7th, but that is what it says. So I don't think there's any confusion. I think the public should be entitled to, to see the history of what went in and it's impossible to find it. I won't be able to find it.
Okay, this is getting into the, I mean, we're jumping the agenda a bit.
The motion on the table is approval of the minute.
Yes.
The record, I don't agree that we did not adopt the P O C D. We'll get to that.
Oh, we'll get to that. That's item 1C on the agenda.
So my other two requests for notifications, can that be, can the chairman request that they be provided to us? So we know who was notified when about the P O C D, so into statute.
Are you talking about public notifications of the public hearings and other?
We're supposed to submit it to Harbor Management. We're supposed to submit it to Metro Cod. We're supposed to submit it to the town clerk. We're supposed to put it on the website. We're supposed to submit it to Board of Selectmen. Those are all different dates in the 8-23 statute. We don't, we never seem to get notices. I'd like to get them. So we know that we satisfied our statutory requirement. So that's, that's what I requested on October 28th. As well as the specific edits that were made to Harbor Management section on October 7th. I don't know how to judge whether we made them because I honestly couldn't find the old version. And I don't know if the thing we voted on has those exact edits that we discussed. Making. So I would like to see those edits as well. Those are the
Can we, let's, let's, if we need to continue this, let's do it as part of item 1C for now. Any other comments on the motion on the table? To approve the meeting.
Well, then can we bifurcate the vote? Because I can't vote in favor of the minutes if it doesn't accurately reflect what happened. I can vote on the other.
I think Director Harrigan provided an explanation that the meeting minutes reflected decisions taken. And then there's another conversation we can continue about what should be part of the P O C D record. I think that's more perfectly had as part of the
I can't vote. I can't vote yes on one and no on the other if we're combining.
We can separate the two.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
So let's vote on October 28th. The motion again is to approve the meeting minutes. In favor, raise your hand. Opposed. Motion passes. October, November 13th, again, the motion is to approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor? All those opposed. Carriage unanimously. Thank you. Item 2B, 1B rather, TPZ budget and draft 2026 meeting schedule.
Yes, sir.
The commission, the prior chair had requested budget information for the TPZ department. Our budget is divided into two sections, a budget for the zoning board of appeals and the actions required as, as part of facilitating the running of that, that zoning board of appeals, so the secretarial services. Advertising fees and professional services for transcripts and things like that. So our budget is, is quite small for the zoning board of appeals. They only meet once monthly or on an as needed basis. It's very rare that they cancel a meeting, but it is potentially possible. The largest chunk of our budget is the town plan and zoning portion. And our budget is primarily driven by salary. As you'll see in the breakdown of the budget. There are, however, certain things that are also included in the budget such as fees and professional services. We frankly, in last year exceeded our fees and professional services in part because of the number of 830G applications that we had before the board. If there is an appeal filed for an 830G application, we are required by state statute to produce transcripts, verbatim transcripts. And as you know, some of those 830G applications were three to four meetings, several hours in length. And so for each appeal that has been filed, those transcripts run about five, four to $5,000 for our department and we are likely going to be over budget because of the appeals action for the commission. Other than that, if you look at our budget, we also will likely be over budget for some of the secretarial services. Our board clerks get a stipend for attending the, the meetings as well as for producing the minutes above and beyond their hourly, their salary in the office. And because of the number of meetings that we have had in the last year and continued to have through the end of the fiscal year, that budget line item is also higher than anticipated. The other thing that is not part of the budget because it runs with the capital budget is the ARPA funds that we were provided by the town in order to finish our plan of conservation and development. As the second phase to update our, the format, the structure and the organization of our zoning regulations. And then we have about $62,000 work related to the zoning regulation updates. We are not a revenue generating department, so our fees are rather modest, but for anyone who has had to go through both plan and zoning and the building department for permitting, you know that the building permit fees are usually significantly substantial. So normally in municipalities, the planning zoning fees are, and Attorney Fallon can probably attest to this. The planning and zoning fees are usually modest in scale because building permits are significant. So that's just a general overview of our budget. I will also add, I think the commission had asked what the legal fees are, which are not part of our budget, but it pays for the town attorney when we have 830G appeals. The Berkeley Road case, 59qua, 131 Beach Road. And the other appeals that are pending for the town as of the end of September have cost the town about $110,000 so far. That's what I have for the budget.
Higher. And when is the 2026 budget sent to the town, their budget request?
So we start that process usually in January.
Is this a thing we're voting on or discussing?
This is an informational item, Commissioner Randolph.
What are the headers on the rows?
Sorry?
The headers?
On the buzzer.
Oh, for zoning board of appeals and the
So, so it's, it's the columns. So it's, you know, 7, 781, 782. What, what are those numbers? What's the header of the column?
Oh, at the top here? I think the, the, the leftmost item is what has originally been budgeted for. And then I think forecast. The next one is I believe expenditures to date. And sorry, the last column is balance left within that budget line item. And then the percentage is how much we've expended so far within that line item.
Commissioner Braun.
When I was on the RTM, usually there were columns for prior years. Can we get that clarified? So we know exactly what, can we get something that has the headings typed on it? So we understand that better.
This doesn't include any prior year projections. It's just for this budget year.
It would be nice to have something that we know what the headings are, you know, typed on it. And I have a question. I don't see anything here for us hiring professional staff to help us, like say an engineer or a traffic engineer or a stormwater engineer. I feel like our commission needs to have our own independent expertise for things like this. Because when we don't have neighbors that hire somebody, we only hear pretty much one side of the story. And it's nice to have that independent peer review. I know other towns do it. Has to be put in the budget unless we pass a regulation requiring the applicant to pay for it, which we're allowed to do. But if we don't do that, or until we do that, we have to cover it somehow. So I would like to add something in there for us to hire somebody that can give us detailed, detailed information as needed. It might not be appropriate in most instances, but it might in some complicated applications if we don't, because every time we do get an expert on the other side, we always find out a whole lot of stuff we never found out before. And I think we should have our own peer review.
Commissioner Braun, I my, my question to Director Harrigan was, was essentially getting to that. This is, so the document here is the current budget. So I think that's
This is not the budget request?
No, which is what I was speaking. So I think, I think there's the agreement among a number of commissioners that there are additional, additional funding requests that may be appropriate. So I think we may want to have a discussion about future budgetary requests in a subsequent meeting.
This budgetary request, right? We're working on this.
2026, that Director Harrigan just said.
So we're in the middle of that process right now.
I'm not sure we're in the middle of that process. I think we
It hasn't started yet.
Yeah.
It'll start.
There's a label on it, but okay, so.
This, this is the existing budget as to what we have today in terms of the, the previous fiscal budget, which ends at the end of June. So the fiscal year for the town starts July 1. And this is where we are with our budget at this time.
And the budget process, when do we submit our budget request to the Board of Selectmen or to the first selection?
Well, generally, I do that on behalf of the department and behalf of the function that we provide in supporting the Plan and Zoning Commission. And normally that will start with meetings with the first selectman's office in January. And the finance department and then proceeds through Board of Selectmen review, Board of Finance review. And then goes from there.
So we don't have do we have another meeting in November? So we only have maybe two more meetings before January. So maybe so we need to look at that, right? So you'll come back to us with your budget request that we can look at?
We, we
Will you submit it?
Can. I mean, I, I think, I think if you're requesting that we add something, I think I would need to understand what that is.
I think that can be done prior, given the limited number of meetings we have. If there are requests for additional items, I think.
You mentioned that people already have ideas for additional.
I happen, I happen to, I mean, I think there are things that would require additional budget. I, I've heard other commissioners raise that in, in meetings. So I know that some combination of commissioners has, have ideas. So I think given that we only have two meetings left in the calendar year, it might make sense for folks to submit ideas or requests in writing, any through email to staff and depending on what comes of that, we can potentially discuss that in our future meetings.
Before it gets submitted, obviously. Yeah.
Yeah, but let's, let's start with sending in emails to staff and then okay, and then the other part of that is the meeting schedule.
Yes, so I've provided to you a meeting schedule. You have handouts. And normally normally the Plan and Zoning Commission has always met twice a month. As you know, we have an allocation of ARPA funds to update our zoning regulations and I would recommend at this point, we add a third meeting to each month for planning purposes. So I've provided on this, and this is a draft. You don't vote on this until the December meeting, similar to your vote for officers. And then we would have to forward the schedule to the town clerk's office. But I just wanted to provide this as a potential for us to move forward, understanding that you know, outside of the project work that we have, we may very well have need for extra time to discuss some of, you know, the zoning regulation work that we'd like to do.
So we're not voting tonight, but I do have a question. I'm against, by the way, putting dates on our calendar. I think we can do it as needed, if needed. But also I have a question about ARPA funds because we've discussed this before. Understanding is the ARPA funds have to be, they had to be committed by now and they are committed. But they have to be used by the end of 2026. That's my understanding. Is that true?
That is correct.
We have the whole year to do it. So I, I think we can you know, I'm surprised there's that much left, honestly. But I'm sure we can eat that up during the year as we do other functions. We've already done the P O C D. And we've already done the reformatting of the regulations. Is there, is there a reformatting of the the map that needs to be done also?
It's not part of the scope of work of this contract with our consultant.
So the only thing we would be using them for is to change our regulations to support the new P O C D. Or any other way we want to change our regulations. That's the only other work we'd be using this ARPA paid consultant for.
We can also use it for visualizations, analysis tools. So that's part of the work that's anticipated.
Comments, questions on the proposed schedule?
Point of clarification. Sorry. Just the item or the line items at the bottom of this page.
I'm having trouble hearing you. I'm sorry.
Sorry. For the line items that are at the bottom of the page, are those the proposed additional meetings for them?
Yeah.
Everyone.
I was just gonna say, we have a full schedule tonight, but I don't think we'll have that full schedule every night. I mean, a lot of this might be backlog from the 830G surge we had. And are the, all the 830Gs over now? Like, are we done with all them?
We have at least.
Is there anything else to be voted on that's 830G? Which ones?
For 221 Black Rock Turnpike has submitted a modification request. So we do have that left. And then I will say, based on meetings that I've had in the office, I think that there is a lot more applications that will be coming our way in the future. With this potential schedule, what this does is it basically blocks out this space, which I think is a good space for us to meet in because we want to continue to have our meetings in a hybrid fashion. It blocks out this space. It blocks these dates out on the calendar with the town clerk. At any time, you can cancel a meeting if for whatever reason you end up being able to do, to use one meeting a month for project based reviews and then another meeting for planning. It's, we haven't been lucky enough to be able to really dedicate a whole meeting to planning in quite some time. So this is just what I would, what I would assume is the safest way to proceed and then we can always cancel.
I'm just not prepared to put it in the calendar like that.
Commissioner Capozzi.
I knocked a lot of doors this election and people really, the voters that I spoke to really hammered on the desire that this committee engage in planning. And in my
I'm having trouble hearing a couple of them.
I knocked a lot of doors and most of the voters I spoke to that were aware of the function of this, of this commission were very interested in this commit, this commission doing the work of planning, not reacting, but planning. In my experience, it's easier to take a date off a calendar than it is to add one onto a calendar. Therefore, I am in favor of adding these dates to the calendar and removing dates if we don't need them rather than the other way around.
And again, we're not voting on this at this meeting. I tend to agree. I think we, I think proactive planning something we should be doing more of and having dedicated meetings for that, I think makes sense, but we don't have to make a decision tonight. That'll be at the next meeting. Any other comments or questions on the proposed schedule?
And I certainly do ask if for whatever reason I've missed a holiday in this group of meetings and you need to let me know that, please feel free to do so.
I want to make one other point. The 8-30G applications tend to have tighter deadlines, right? The regular applications, we possibly could make more use of the statutory timeframes to both bring it to a hearing, hold the hearing, and then vote on it after the hearing. I, I was just thinking that that might be another way of managing our schedule to incorporate planning within meetings themselves rather than holding all these honestly, three times a month. That's, that's just like what we've been doing for the last year.
So if I could just speak to that Mr. Acting Chair. The other thing that I haven't really, we, we don't really know the weight of yet is the changes based on SB 9, which are going to require that this commission review a significant number of coastal site plan applications relative to what we have looked at in the past. We have, we, our shoreline area is constantly under redevelopment. Single family homes that were not subject to that review requirement are now going to be subject to that review requirement. So again, I, I would just feel more comfortable having the schedule outlined and the rooms reserved and the you know, the dates reserved on your calendars. We can always cancel a meeting.
Okay.
Would there be an agenda for those meetings that was decided in advance or how would that be handled?
So as the staff liaison to the commission for, for the planning meetings, I think that before we kind of kick off this process, I would suggest we really talk about the regulations that you want to work on and we can, we can develop kind of a general calendar because we do have to notice every regulation change that we're proposing. We have to refer those out to neighboring communities, to our council of governments. If they have impact to properties that are within the coastal management area, we need to send them to the DEP. So there is kind of a structured timeline to doing this zoning regulation revision work. And we can generally build out a calendar. We have to see how the discussions go in terms of whether members of the public, you know, there's comment, there needs to be revision. Some of these zoning regulation changes, I would recommend we also forward to our town attorney for review. So there's time built into that, but I think we can have probably a loose schedule. We should know the items that we need to be analyzed, mapped in a certain way, design elements produced from our consultant upfront. So we can make sure that we get that work accomplished prior to our deadline.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. And, and I guess that brings us back to the P O C D. So we have this on the agenda for this evening. I would ask, given that we have two new commissioners who were not here during the creation of this document, that I would ask for a motion to table this to our next meeting to give an opportunity for them to dig into it a little bit further. Commissioner Randolph.
I've moved to table. We have new commissioners. It's a lengthy document. Everyone a couple of weeks to go through it. Now, which strongly, it sounds as if there's a learning curve that existing commissioners, new commissioners need to get up. I would encourage you to spend time, questions. I would encourage you to spend time, questions, with staff. They're available, they're informed, and they have all the information. They can help through the specifics of finding information on our website.
Can I get a second on that motion, please?
Yeah, so I would encourage everyone to take the time to go to staff. We only have, what, our next meeting is the third?
No, December ninth.
The ninth, okay. So it's not much time to go through this lengthy document, but I encourage you to go talk to staff and then also learn about the, the tax amendment process, because it's the same tax amendment process that we follow for attorney-initiated tax, correct? So we're, we're, it's, it's a little bit complicated, but I would encourage all the members to go. Understand the process.
I'll be brief. The text amendment, I'm not sure what Commissioner Randolph was saying. The text amendment process is different than the P O C D process. Were you saying they're the same or?
We're, look at the, look, there seems to be a lack of understanding of the tax amendment process that's being proposed in this, that's going to come out of the P O C D adoption. So as you speak with, I encourage you to go speak to staff and understand the P O C D and answer any questions. Find the information that you've had, been having a hard time finding, but also understand, take the time to understand the tax amendment process that's here, so we don't spend time in this meeting educating everybody on the tax amendment process. I'm just asking you to take that time with staff, because they're experts at this, and that's, they will help you out.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I misunderstood what you said. So, so I would just request what, basically what I said before, can we, before we meet again, so we're fully informed about the status of everything that's required, can we get copies of all the notifications and submissions that were done of this draft that has certain statutory timeframes? I'd like to have that. And also, I would like to have the specific edits that were made on October seventh for the harbor management section of the P O C D. And also, can we restore it to the website so we can find it more easily? Those are my three requests that, can we get that before the ninth? Enough time before the ninth so that we can just more easily deal with what we have to do on the ninth?
I mean, I think it's, I think we could get the commission access to the information. I don't think we commit the, obligate the staff to do website work prior to then. But I think we can.
You're going to T guy, just link it over or something?
I mean, it's, I, I feel like I've sent this to you via email directly several times, but I'm happy to.
Notices to the different departments?
The links to everything several times via email, but I'm happy to do it again.
On the website, there should, the I T person should be able to, the public should be entitled to this. That's, that's what I'm saying. But the, all the mandatory notifications and submissions, that's the other thing, like, that's never been to us, and that's not on the website. That's never been on the website. So I would like to have that also, just so I'm fully informed when we come back on the ninth. We don't delay it any further.
Happy to provide that.
Very great. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that when you get to it on the ninth, there's still the issue of whether or not we've properly, we've already adopted the P O C D, and I'll be prepared to address that at that point as well.
Thank you.
The town attorney has a point that we did not adopt it. He, he opined that we do not have adequate votes.
The motion is the table. We really shouldn't be having a discussion on motions at table. So let's have a vote. I think that's a fair discussion to have at the December ninth meeting. So for now, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to table this item. Motion passes unanimously. Go to new applications to recommend a public hearing. I'll call these items together. One sixty-one Sherman Street and six sixteen and twenty-six Sherman Court, special permit coastal site application of Sound Development Group L L C to construct seven residential dwelling units within two proposed townhouse buildings in the neighborhood design district zone. Sixteen forty-three Post Road, special permit application of Sikorsky Financial Credit Unit Inc. for exterior renovation and associated site reconfiguration of an existing building and bank use in a center-designed business district. Application of Primrose Development L L C for revision of the zoning regulations to add section forty-three Black Rock Affordable District to allow the construction of affordable one hundred eighty-four unit multifamily housing development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes in a resident triple A zone. And application of Primrose Development L L C to rezone parcels located at four, forty-two, twenty-one, and forty-two, sixty-seven Black Rock Turnpike to the Black Rock Affordable Housing Zone on land presently zoned as residential triple A pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Can I have a motion on these? Commissioner Delgado.
We're recommending them to public hearing.
To recommend. Thank you. Can I have a second? Commissioner Bronn? Commissioner Bronn?
No comments.
Hearings are required. Anyone, any other comments, questions? Let's put this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to move to public hearing, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the coastal site plan and compliance applications. Thirty-three Rita Avenue Coastal Site Application of R T V Fairfield L C for the demolition of a single-family residence and construction of a FEMA compliant duplex in a residence B zone. Mullin, you taking this one?
Yes, I am. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Jonathan Mullin, Assistant Planning Director of Fairfield. For you is a application for a coastal area management site plan review for a new structure at thirty-three Rita Avenue. The subject parcel is located at thirty-three Rita Avenue in the Residence B zoning district. The nine hundred ninety, one hundred and ninety square foot parcel is located at the south side of, on the south side of Rita Avenue and is bounded by residential parcels on all sides. The structure on the site has been demolished, and the site improvements have all been removed. The site formerly contained a one and a half story, non-elevated, single-family structure and various yard site improvements, including walkways and a shed. The property is located approximately four hundred feet from a largely tidally influenced wetland system to the east and just over a half mile from Long Island Sound. Entire site is located in the A E eleven zone, which requires one foot extra compliance known as Freeboard. Premier FEMA issued a letter of, letter, letter of map amendment, which removed only the previous structure from the flood zone on October fifteen, two thousand fourteen. Demolition of the previous structure, however, remove the applicability of this lawman and the new construction. And new construction is required to be FEMA compliant. The proposal calls for the demolition of all existing structures and construction of its new two and a half story duplex style two-unit building with parking areas beneath the first floor for each unit. Parking areas will be enclosed on three sides by flood-resistant horizontal slots placed six, six inches apart with forty percent clearance, opening in accordance with section twenty point two point five of the zoning regulations and a garage door. Each unit will have a fully enclosed stairwell and landing leading from the garage to the first floor, constructed with breakaway walls, each having flood vents placed in accordance with section twenty point two point five point C point three of the zoning regulations. This is, the existing driveway and curb cuts will be removed, and two new curb cuts will determine his driveway will be installed on the northern side of the lot. The lot will be loomed and seeded with grass. Each unit will have a twenty-foot wide elevated deck, on the twenty-foot wide by fourteen-foot deep elevated deck stairs at the rear yard. Each unit will also have a covered patio. And the eastern patio will be three hundred and thirty-six square feet, western patio will be four hundred square feet. The applicant proposes a subsurface stormwater infiltration system for each unit. The systems in the eastern, the eastern unit will be located at the northwest corner of the property under the driveway, and the system for the western unit will be located at the southeast corner of the property in the rear yard. Runoff from the roof captured from the underground leaders while runoff from the Batuminis driveway will be captured by trench trains. The proposed structure will have public sewer and water sewer, water service. Each soil, soil and erosion and sediment controls are required for the development parcel to limit any construction-related impacts to adjacent roadway. The plan shows perimeter silt fencing and silt fencing around the construction stockpile area located at the southwest corner of the site, as well in, as well as an anti-tracking path. Erosion and sediment control protection shall be maintained through the entirety of the project site until the construction is completed, and these measures should adequately protect the adjacent coastal resources. The C, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Land Water Resources Division comments were received on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, and proposed conditions are included below. Staff recommended, right, staff recommends the following conditions in approving this coastal area management plan. One, the soil erosion and sediment controls shall be installed and maintained during the entirety of the construction of the project. Two, the H V A C utility meters shall be incorporated into the plan to ensure FEMA compliance. Three, the applicant must confirm with the utility company that the electricity meter is accessible and take any steps necessary to provide safe access to the meter. And four, the applicant should provide stormwater treatment for stormwater runoff from the proposed patios. So that is, is that, can you answer any questions?
Thank you, Miss Mullin. Commissioner Bronn?
Yeah, is this something that we, do we vote on these tonight, these coastal type plans? So I have, I have questions that I'm going to ask on all of these, the same questions pretty much, so.
Okay.
So number one, what is, I'll just read them off to you. So what is the increase in impervious surface and from the prior to the proposed? What is the linear distance to the nearest tidal wetland or inland wetland? And how many added bedrooms are there? And the reason I'm asking is, the B P has said it's consistent, except that they have a little caveat in their, in their letter, right? Which basically saying it could be inconsistent with the, let's see, where is that? They say it's consistent, but another goal of the Coastal Management Act is twenty-two eight dash ninety-two, B two F, is to manage coastal hazard areas so as to ensure that development proceeds in such a manner that hazards to life and property are minimized. That goes above and beyond FEMA regulations, because it avoids placing people in harm's way. Now, this, if you could just answer those three questions, that would help me a lot.
If, if, can I, can I go ahead? So presently, our zoning allows for duplexes in this zone. I think we've had this conversation in our, in our discussion of the plan of conservation and development, that the D E P is providing these advisory statements to indicate that they think with future sea level rise that we should stop allowing for increased density. Right now, we, we don't have regulations that allow us to do that. Their advisory comments to us are just that, their advisory. So absent changing our zoning regulations, which could be a, a discussion that we have when we get to that next portion of, of revising our zoning regulations, our zoning regulations allow what's being requested. So, you know, as to the other items for impervious surface, I guess, John, you can take those. But, you know, we're, we're going to end up with this comment, I mean, I should just state this, that we're going to end up with this comment from D E P for every single application where there's an increase in bedroom. And I know this came up with the Reef Road discussion, where we have a non-compliant, something that is on the ground, will get flooded to a FEMA compliant structure. We're going to get this comment from D E P every single time we have to, we have to mandatorily refer something up to them. So it is something that I think the commission should talk about, but right now, our regulations permit that change.
But we're still, we still have discretion. It determines that this project on this site may or may not be satisfied, satisfy the coastal management policies. So D E P gives us guidance. We don't have to follow it if we don't want to. And they, they actually didn't say, don't do it. And I'm not saying don't do it either. I'm just saying, I, I'd like these questions answered, so I can make that determination. So that one would be, we can allow duplexes, but how many more bedrooms will there be with this than there were? It's been demolished, I guess, but.
It has been demolished.
What's the increase in usage of the site? What's the increase in impervious surface? And what's the proximity to the nearest tidal wetland? Because that's another concern I have that's separate from this.
So I can answer the impervious surface question. I don't have the answer for. I can get it. This property is located, this thirty-three Rita is a, is located approximately four hundred feet from the, from the largely tidally influenced wetland system to the east. So you head down Rita Street across South Pine Creek, across one of our next applications. You will go into the tidally influenced wetlands that are there. For the, so when I get to the next one, I can tell you that, or with the, but those are both almost adjacent to tidal wetlands. So that's, that, that is, those are the.
This is not adjacent. This is far.
This is, okay, this is up the street, actually, actually up in elevation from the tidal wetland. So and as far as the increase in, in bedrooms, I don't know the bedroom count of the old one, but we're going to, to new duplex, to a duplex. So.
John, I, I zoomed in on the zoning table.
Thank you.
What, what we can tell you, Commissioner Bronn, is, so the existing conditions, we only look at for lot coverage, we look at structures only. We don't count within lot coverage driveways in this particular, in our residential zones. So regardless of whether you're in the triple A zone or in the A zone in a coastal area, we only count buildings towards lot coverage. The pre-existing lot was at seventeen percent building coverage, and the current lot is at twenty-eight point five percent building coverage. So there is an, an increase in the building coverage on the lot.
And Assistant Director Mullins, does that, are you satisfied that that increase in impervious surface is being satisfactorily handled by the stormwater system?
With the exception of the two patios, which we've included on, in condition for, to have them include, either pipe those into the, properly size the stormwater drain, uh, management system. But yes, for the rest of the structure that I have.
And then I would just point something out, okay, this is over a hundred feet away, so I'm not, I'll bring it up on the other applications as far as impacting tidal wetlands. So my understanding is a lot of experts say we should have a hundred-foot buffer between construction and the tidal wetlands. But that's not relevant here, so I won't bring it up here. Thank you.
Any other question, factual questions, Commissioner Randolph, on it?
Mentioned electricity and city water. What about the, will it be gas or propane tanks? A lot of builders choose to use propane tanks, because it's less expensive than hooking into the gas line. And obviously, they are large. A lot of times they're up ground. Sometimes they're buried.
I'm sure, Dr. Harrigan, if you could just, I think the electricity on there.
I, it's likely that there's a gas line.
Tanks or gas.
There's not, in my knowledge, there are no gas lines. Indicated here. Might be on the.
Normally, they would indicate if they're providing a propane tank in this neighborhood. What we find is in the beach neighborhood, everybody's connecting into gas for the most part.
Not everywhere. It's a lot less expensive for holders to put the propane tank in.
Here, you have to, what we've found in the beach area is that folks don't want to put them on an elevated platform. So I think if they have the ability to connect into gas, that's what, that's normally what they'll do because of the floodplain management requirements for a lot of the coastal site plan applications that we see.
Can that be a condition?
That it be.
Natural gas.
I, I mean, if they choose not to and have electric or solar, I mean, I don't know that we can.
I don't think we can make them choose.
Yeah.
If they have propane, I think you'd have to elevate it.
Correct.
It would be lot coverage.
If it's on a platform, yes. That's my question, yeah.
Commissioner Saccary?
What's the proposed heating method in this building?
Did not say. Okay, that's why I was asking.
That's why I was asking about propane tanks versus the gas.
Commissioner Randolph?
Oh, just a point of clarification. So, let's see, there's a Batuminis driveway, just as a point of clarification. Are there maximum lot coverage requirements for impervious surface down there? So there's no, so I, I'm just asking that, because as we identify the gaps in our P O C D, there's no regulations on maximum lot cover of the materials.
No, right now, as it is purely on buildings.
Okay. I'm sorry, one follow-up question on that heating. There is no requirement, I mean, as long as you have electricity, there is no requirement for anything other than a heating source, correct?
That's a building code issue. I wouldn't be able to speak to that. Any other questions? Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I mean, if they did have propane, they would need to raise it up fourteen feet and would have to be on the plans, correct?
They would have to. I don't know if they'd have to raise it up fourteen. I don't, it'd have to be.
They would have to, I don't know if they'd have to raise it up fourteen, I don't, it'd have to be uh, one foot, at least above the B F E.
Um, so it would have to be at elevation twelve, this is in an A E eleven flood zone area, so.
Okay, and that would also have to be on the plans. Based on your review, is there any, assuming they properly size the stormwater to include the patios, uh, based on your review, is there any threat to the, uh, tidal wetlands, uh, implicated by this project?
Yes. So, yeah, I believe so.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion on the item? For Braun. Second, Commissioner Randolph?
Well, I'm, I'm satisfied that, um, Assistant Director Mullins is satisfied that the stormwater system will work. It's far enough from the wetlands where I'm not concerned about. And it's a very minor increase in, in population density, unlike reef road, it's a couple people, a couple bedrooms. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this project.
Okay, Commissioner Randolph?
It meets the regulations.
Commissioner Lady?
I assume it'd be a motion to approve with the conditions stated.
Commissioner Braun?
With the conditions stated, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, you're good for that. Any other comments, questions? All right, let's put this, so vote all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next item, six fifteen South Pine Creek, site application of six fifteen South Pine LLC to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a FEMA compliant duplex in a residence B zone.
Still me. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, again, Jonathan Mullin, Assistant Planning Director. Um, this, the proposal is, uh, at six fifteen South Pine Creek Road, actually right down the street from our previous application, located, uh, on the south side of, or on the east side of, um, South Pine Creek in the Residence B zoning district. Um, it's a nine thousand, uh, fifty-three square foot lot, bounded on all sides by, um, by residential parcels to the north and south and west sides and to town-owned open space to the east. The parcel contains a one-story, non-elevated, single-family residence and a two, and a detached two-car garage. Current proposal calls for the demolition of all existing structures, driveways, walkways, and the construction of a new two-story, two-unit, uh, building with an elevated FEMA compliant foundation. Entire site is located within the A E eleven zone, which requires a one-foot extra compliance known as freeboard. Access to the site will be through a thirteen-foot drive, uh, through two thirteen-foot wide curb cuts, the northwest and southwest corners of the site, leading to thirty-foot-long driveways in front of the proposed structure. The units will be oriented side by side with the front sides facing west. The ground floor structure, ground floor of the structure is proposed to be partially enclosed, non-livable floodable space to be used as parking for one car for each unit. The parking spaces will have garage doors to the west side and access to the, to loggia space to the east in an enclosed entranceway to the, in an enclosed entranceway. The loggia space for the northern unit will be partially enclosed by eight-foot tall by six-foot-wide openings with one inch by five-inch slats spaced nine inches apart. Each unit will have access through a hundred and twenty-one square foot, uh, enclosed entryway constructed of breakaway walls with flood vents located on separate walls in compliance with human town regula, uh, town and fairfield regulations. Each unit will have it, will also have an HVAC unit mounted on a platform one foot above the B F E on the east side of the building. The lot will be loomed and seeded with grass. Uh, there'll be two subsurface stormwater management systems for the structure, one located in the front yard and one in the rear. The system in the front yard will treat the driveway runoff captured by entrenched drains near the street, while the system in the rear yard will treat roof runoff captured by downspouts and roof leaders. Soil erosion and sediment control measures are required for development, uh, for the development parcel to limit any construction-related impacts to the adjacent roadway. The plan show, the plans show perimeter fencing and self-fencing surrounding the construction stockpile area located to the northeast corner of the site, as well as an anti-tracking pad at the southwest corner. Erosion protection and sedimentation control shall be maintained on the project site until the construction is complete. These measures should adequately protect all adjacent coastal resources. Um, the, uh, deep C T D E P comments from Water Resources Division were received on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, and proposed conditions are included below. And they are, one, that sediment and erosion control shall be installed and maintained during the entirety of the construction project at the subject site. Two, HVAC and utility meters should be incorporated into the plan to ensure FEMA compliance. And three, the applicant must confirm with their utility company that the electric meter is accessible to take any steps necessary to provide safe access to the meter. Um, Director Harrigan, if you wouldn't mind zooming in on the, uh, table so we could show the increase, the change in lot coverage. So, uh, current conditions are with the building at eighteen point six percent and proposed conditions are twenty-nine point six percent. So that is the answer to the increase in impervious surface. I don't have the bedroom counts, uh, for that one, for this, again, it's a single-family, looks to be a cape or a salt box going to a two-unit, um, duplex. So there will be an increase in beds, as noted in the FEMA, in, in the, uh, C T D E P letter. Uh, this site is not, it's adjacent to town-owned, uh, town-owned open space, however, the open space as it's, um, is directly to the east. The tidal wetlands don't actually start until a significant number of feet, I don't have the exact number of feet away from the property line. So there is actually a, almost a built-in buffer, um, before you get to the tidal wetlands. So, um, whereas, and when we get to the next site plan, that'll be, that's, that's a different situation, but this one, we felt that, um, the already existing trees and natural land cover that's in the town-owned, uh, town-owned open space, um, was adequate, uh, to provide a buffer for the, um, for the, uh, the tidal wetlands. And also any construction-related, um, issues should be managed, will be managed by the, um, soil erosion control measures that they've proposed.
And, well, it looks to me from an aerial that it's probably a hundred feet away from that open space area, it's hard to tell, though. Does it seem about that much to you?
Yeah, it's, I, I.
With a lot of trees.
There are a lot of trees. I went back several years on our air photo viewer, we can see what it looks like, and there are, um, there are, it is, there are some, um, mature vegetation in, in open space, um, in be, between the edge of this property line. When you get to the tidal marshlands, which are towards the far eastern portion of, well, not far eastern, which is, it goes all the way out into the wetlands, but eastern, far, far enough east from the property line of six fifteen South Pine Creek Road.
So in the past, when there's been wetlands in the vicinity, the DEP, I'm just looking at a letter that came before us in twenty twenty-two, they went farther than they're going in this letter, the DEP did, and they're saying, if it's in the vicinity of tidal wetlands, consider putting a condition of approval, um, that, um, uh, we strongly caution that the applicant have no structures such as seawalls or revetments to be, would be allowed as solutions to any future flooding or erosion problems on the parcel. Now, that one was closer to a wetland than this, I believe, so maybe that wouldn't recommend that in this case to protect the tidal wetlands?
You know, okay, I don't think, I don't see it, I, I, like I said, there's a, we felt there's a significant enough distance between the edge of this property line and where the tidal wetlands start, based on the mapping that we have available to us, that there was sufficient buffering between the tidal wetlands and this, um, this structure and the, and the property line, so. Uh,
Just, if I could just put on the record, the reason they say that, and it doesn't seem necessary here, is that tidal wetlands such as those adjacent to those properties will likely drown as sea level rises because there is no, if there is no upland review area, upland area available for the wetlands to migrate to. That's the reason they said that. But that's not applicable in this case, cause it's far enough away.
I would say so, and I say that there's probably some room for the wetlands to grow if they're gonna grow to the west.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from other commissioners? You have a motion on the item, please?
Excuse me, I have a question. How tall will this building be?
It will be. Thirty-eight.
What will be the total lot coverage once it's completely developed?
The lot coverage will be done, will be twenty-nine point six percent. Um, and.
The height is thirty-two point seven five to the midpoint of the roof.
Thank you.
That's consistent with the neighboring buildings that were also constructed very similar.
Uh, similar to the newer ones, yeah, not to the existing ones.
Mr. Mullin, get up, a motion on the item. Commissioner Levy? Second, Commissioner Braun?
Doesn't seem to be any, uh, significant impact on the, uh, tidal wetlands, um, to be the trend, uh, in the B zone as far as heading duplex, and it does meet our regulations.
Okay, Commissioner Braun?
I feel comfortable that, um, Assistant Director Mullins feels comfortable that, um, the wetlands will be protected and that it's really not much of an increase in use, although the impervious surface is going up, but, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'd like to make sure that, um, heating sources are actually noted, again propane or gas, cause again, they take up space.
Okay, so would you like that as a, asking for that specific?
Yes.
Well, I guess the condition would be that, uh, um, may not be permitted any additional lot coverage for, uh, heating sources, uh, which would preclude propane, but would still allow for electrical and gas to seem to cover the concern.
Okay.
Perhaps.
Commissioner Braun, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Any other comments? Commissioner Belgato?
Uh, there is mention of gas in the architectural plans, so I think if others still wanna continue with the motion as it's been amended, it's fine, but I think.
It's like gas, but it doesn't dictate.
Well, it's, it's referring from crosstalk, uh, to you. Okay, thank you. Um, okay.
We could just, do the plans reflect, uh, gas, uh?
Sorry, I don't, I don't have those open, um.
The thing is gas, and that's what we're proving.
Let me just see if there is a, there is a gas line shown on the plans. There is gas line, water line. Um, so there is a gas line shown that leads back to the structure.
Yeah, line to the street?
Yes, correct.
Well, I guess the, uh, condition doesn't hurt me.
Okay, any other comments? Put this to vote, all those in favor of the motion to approve of conditions, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Um, next item, seven oh nine, South Pine Creek Coastal Site Plan. Um, IC contracting LLC to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a FEMA compliant duplex in a residence B zone.
Evening again, uh, the proposal for you is, um, located at seven oh nine South Pine Creek Road. The majority of the property is located in the Residence B zoning district, with a small portion of the southeast corner located in the floodplain district. The parcel is ten thousand seven hundred sixty-eight square feet approximately, and is located on the east side of South Pine Creek Road. It's bound on residential parcels to the north, south, and west sides, protected tidal marshlands owned by the town to the east. The parcel contains a one-story, non-elevated, single-family residence with a two, two, with a detached two-car garage. There is, uh, the current proposal calls for demolition of the existing structure and all, uh, walkways and driveways and construction of a two, uh, new two-unit, two-story building with an elevated FEMA compliant structure. Uh, as I said earlier, the majority of the site is, oh no, excuse me, the majority of the site is located in the A E eleven zone, which requires one foot of extra compliance known as freeboard. Very small portion of the property at the southeastern corner is located in the A E twelve zone, which requires one foot freeboard as well, however, no development is proposed for this area. Access to the site will be through a twenty-four-foot curb, uh, wide curb cut the southwest corner of the lot, leading to a paved area along the southern property line. The building will be oriented such that the unit entrances will be south-facing. The ground force structure will, is proposed to be partially enclosed with non-livable floodable space to be used for parking and enclosed patio or loggia space. Parking spaces will have garage doors on the south side and enclosed loggia spaces will be partially enclosed by a eight-foot-tall by six-foot-wide openings with one inch by five-inch slats spaced nine inches apart. Bloodwaters will be able to pass through the slatted openings as well as through the series of ten-six-foot-by-eight-foot-wide tall openings along the north side of the building. Each unit will have access through a ninety-eight-square-foot enclosed entryway. Existing driveways, oh, uh, sorry, six-foot-by-tall, uh, ninety-eight-foot-enclosed entryway, existing driveway curb cut will be removed, new curb cut will be, uh, a new curb cut and a fourteen-foot-wide two-minute driveway will be installed at the southeast corner of the lot, and it will be loomed and seeded with grass. Runoff from the roof will be captured by, by roof leaders, and the driveway will be pitched to send, uh, runoff uh, to the trench drains located at the, each garage entrance. Runoff will be directly, it will be directed to a subsurface stormwater management system installed at the northwest corner of the property. And the soil erosion and sediment controls will be required for this development parcel to limit any construction-related impacts. Plans show perimeter self-fencing and self-fencing around the construction stockpile area located at the northeast uh, corner of the site, as well as an anti-tracking pad. Erosion protection and sediment controls shall be maintained for the project site until the, uh, construction is completed. These measures should adequately protect all adjacent coastal resources. The site is adjacent to town-owned tidal marshlands. The application, the applicant has submitted a coastal planting plan, which is one of the tabs up there, Director Harrigan, right next, should be right next to this one. There it is. Um, uh, the applicant has submitted a coastal planting plan that includes a row of shrubs and a Nomo area at the east side of the property that will serve as a buffer to the tidal marshlands. Connecticut E P Water and Land Works, uh, Land and Water Resources Division comments were released, received on September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and proposed conditions are included below. Staff recommends the following conditions in approving this coastal area management plan. Soil erosion and, and erosion, soil erosion and sediment controls shall be installed and maintained during the entirety of the construction project at the subject site. Proposed planting plan, uh, is implemented at the east side of the property. Such plans shall be subject to review and approved by the Z E O and installed prior to the certification of occupancy for the structure. For each group, uh, for each of the ground floor enclosures, flood vents shall be installed on separate walls in accordance with section twenty-point-three-point-dead-point-two of the Town and Fairfield Regulations. An exterior door at the top of the stairs from the lowest floor enclosure to the first floor shall be installed in accordance with section twenty-point-two-point-five-point-G of the zoning regulations. The applicant shall submit revised plans incorporating all recommended changes, including, included in the letter from Connecticut DEP stated, uh, stated September ninth, two thousand twenty-five for approval by town staff prior to obtaining a building permit. Six, the applicant revises the coastal planting plan to reflect the correct species in planting schedule section. And number seven, the applicant files coastal area management plan on the town land records.
Mr. Mullin, Commissioner Braun?
I have some, the same questions I asked before, um, how many more bedrooms are there than there were? How close is this to the tidal wet, how close is any construction activity to the tidal wetland? And, um,
So.
What's the tree removal and, that was a new question.
So we, uh, so for the, uh, the lot coverage, we, uh, go from eleven percent to twenty-three percent. Um, the.
Is there an area we could look at to see distances? Cause I, there's something, I couldn't see the distances, um, on that planting plan. Uh, it was a little.
So if we zoom in on that, I believe that shows.
This has the distance to the back of the property.
Ninety-four feet.
Seven inches, what's it like, to the back of the site?
What do those stripes mean?
So.
Excuse me.
So, the blue dotted line from the corner of the lot, the southeast corner of the, of the proposed structure to the rear of the lot, the blue line, if you go over just a, um, to the left, uh, to the right, so I can see what the, one of them's the coast, this coastal jurisdiction line, and one of them's the tidal line. So the blue one is the tidal line.
Is that north up ahead on top?
North is to the right, south is to the, uh, excuse me, north is to the left, south is to the right. To the top would be east, and to the bottom would be west.
So where the blue line points, that's really pointing to the east, towards the ocean?
Hmm, toward, towards the tidal marshland.
Okay, and that blue dotted line is what again?
That's the tidal line, that's.
That's in the middle of the lawn, according to this, so the lawn.
It is parts, because part of the lot is actually, does have coastal wetlands on it, tidal wetlands on it.
Um, I don't know if it's easier to see here.
I don't know if it's easier to see here.
That's a little, yeah, that's a little easier to understand because you didn't, so you can see that where the north, the compass rose is to the, at the top of the. Well, is there where the existing vegetation is and where the shrubs are? Um, where the um. Where the wetlands area, it's, it's a buffer to the wetlands area to the east and then we have a no mo area in there so that basically prevent the anyone, any tech property owner going into that area and we're keeping it, the wetlands vegetation protected.
So where's the title wetlands actual line?
I don't have that in, I don't.
And how far is the lawn, you're saying there's title wetlands on the lawn? Are they inland wetlands?
There's no inland wetlands on this property.
These are all title.
So there could be title wetlands in the lawn?
It's not lawn area, this is, well. If there is a portion of the, of the area that may have been cut down and mowed by the previous owner. So it may be lawn area now, we're saying, uh, as a the where the no mo area is and the is approximately where the, the wetlands are, so we want to, that's why we had them implement that area.
What's the distance, distance from the lawn to the actual wetland?
I don't know.
It doesn't look very wide anyway.
I think that's the one that's indicated as ninety four feet.
Well, it's nice, yeah, it's ninety four feet from the building.
Lawn is, is not really nature, the lawn is lawn is being, gonna be treated as a lawn, it's not gonna be what, a buffer, a valid buffer to the wetland.
But it'll be a lawn with a no mo area, shrubs and a no mo area and then exit the existing vegetation, which includes the, so we felt that was adequate.
How, how, the no mo area is only ten feet?
Yes. Ten feet wide by the, by ten feet wide deep by the width of the property. Protected in front by, uh.
Mm hmm.
And the, the bayberry bushes.
Receiver.
Yeah.
All the deficiencies that were noted.
Commissioner Bron, let me get to.
Let someone else go.
We see a difference between new structure to the wetlands and the existing structure in the wetlands and what's the difference between the two?
Okay, so if you notice on. Okay, so the, the gray box, that's the detached garage. Then up front towards the bottom left hand, uh, the bottom right hand corner, that's where Director Harrigan is going with the arrows, that is the existing structure. And then the top left going over is the garage and then where Commissioner Harrigan is going around the blue hashed uh square. That is the um proposed structure, because of the width of the lot, they didn't have room to put them side by side and so they had a, they had to and oriented such that, and as I indicated in the report, the, the entrances to the to these units will be from the south. The driveway and the entrances will all be on the south, which would be the right hand side of the drawing. Um, so it is significantly closer uh than it was prior.
How much, again, I'm sorry. Oh, it's closer?
How much closer, uh? I, it meets the setback requirements.
Needs.
So it was, it was at twenty three point five feet from the street setback.
Yeah.
And now it's at forty point five.
Yeah, thank you.
Based on their survey.
Still within.
Well, they're twenty feet beyond the required setback. But I, I would venture um to guess that one of the reasons why they did that is to be able to place their stormwater system in the front of the lot. Um, keep in mind that the prior project, the, the prior house that was here likely had no stormwater detention at all. Based on the age of construction.
Thank you.
Commissioner Saccardi. Um, just because I'm confused, what exact, what, like, what is the wetland area that we're discussing here? Because I'm looking at the lot online, I've just seen lawn for the entire lot. It's a marsh spot.
So the war, the marsh area is is approximately where the, the cursor is going across the screen right now. And it's to the east of that, the, the whole town owned wetland, title wetlands marsh is located to the east, uh, to the right of what would be up, if you were to continue on off the right edge of this drawing. And so there are portions of that area of the, because the, the property line doesn't go, doesn't follow the existing, where, where that green line goes from top left to bottom right, that's where existing vegetation is, but the, the property line kind of zigzags across the back of that. Uh, so some of the, some of the wetlands are located on the property, but majority of the, obviously the larger title wetland is off to, off to the right.
Commissioner Bron.
How do we protect the wetlands on the property in the middle of the lawn? How, how does that get done? Unless you have an.
Well, um, the, they're not in the middle of the lawn, they're in, they're actually to the right of the everything, all the title wetlands are to the right of that and of the no mo area and the.
Alright, so I would feel more comfortable if we expanded the no mo area and delineated it, I don't know, twenty or thirty feet closer to the house, is that something that you think is feasible?
Mister Chair.
Um, Ms. Harrigan.
If, if I could, um. Assistant Director Mullin had had a conversation with, uh, Conservation Director Tim Bishop on this particular.
There's a mic here.
Um, on this particular application and um one of the things that happens is when this is, uh, this whole title marshland system is behind the South Pine Creek Dyke System, so there's not regular inundation in the area that's marked as ti, as a title line. Um, the, the more regular flushing occurs at the very back end of the property where the mitigation planting is proposed. And in conversation with the Conservation Director, um, whose town owned property is adjacent to this, it was felt that if uh we increase this buffer line where there wasn't any kind of regular inundation, it would just become fragmites. Um, instead of being more clear, so um because there's just not enough saltwater inundation on this, on this portion of the, of the property. Could that change in future years? Maybe, but right now, uh, because it's behind the tide gate, that the tide inundation line doesn't get very high.
I'm gonna ask you to explain a little bit, I know what the regulated tide gates are, they regulate water going in and out of the wetland system, so in front of the tide gate versus behind the tide gate, what is, what's, what does that mean?
So behind the tide gate, it means that your tidal flushing is at a lower height. Um, it regulates it so that those tidal marshlands don't drown because you're letting in too much tidal flow into that marshland system. Um, so because of that, um, you know, if you were to go to the DEP website, are, are their coastal jurisdiction lines actually up at elevation five point two? However, uh, when we are behind a um a tide gate, usually the elevation drops considerably because there's not enough tidal flush. Um, and that's purposeful, right, to maintain the health of the, of the marshland system. And so that's the case here where even though that tidal line is higher based on, based on assumed high tides, it's really not an area where you're gonna get much saltwater flushing.
And, okay, thank you for that, um, the, the other items in the DEP report where they showed a deficiency of all the information, this report was written in September, has any of that been rectified?
So some of it has been, uh, and that's why we put all the conditions of approval in there. Um, as you could see that there were at the time when this was written, a lot of these, um additions were, weren't finished, the title, and some of them have been finished, some of them have it. Um, but the conditions were appropriate to, and that we were going to have all of these go forward with these conditions and then once they were, and that's why we put number seven in there to, to memorialize this, the applicant filed the coastal area management plan on the town land records. Therefore, which we normally don't do with um site plans, so that was to try and accommodate getting this, um getting this, uh, this plan going forward. And also there was a unfortunate situation with the, the architect, uh, in that, um uh, Mister Rob passed away not too long ago and his files were on his computer. And he wasn't, uh, they, they weren't, the owner wasn't actually able to access them and they were on, in the middle of trying to pull on a new um architect, so we were trying to accommodate work with the, with the applicant to help them along to condition the approval to have all these things in place when they did get a new architect on board to revise the plans.
You, any other questions? Commissioner Kofosi.
Yeah, I apologize if this is a naive question, but how is the no mo area regulated over time?
So it's, well, the, the area would be, that, that's the, the idea of having the, um, the bushes in front.
Okay.
Would, would keep, would make it such that it's not.
Is it clear delivered?
And, and having it on the land records too, having this coastal plan on the land records too, would help. That would have, that, that would be something that if someone would be able to find readily.
No question.
Commissioner Monahan.
Is fencing allowed at the rear of these properties?
Is fencing allowed? I, I think it is. We went with a natural buffer versus a split, like a split rail fence.
Right now, it's not, we, we don't have anything in our regulations that prohibits fencing within a flood zone. Um, you know, that is something that I think the commission can take up if they feel like, you know, similar to what normally the Conservation Commission will, or the, sorry, the inland wetlands commission will require adjacent to areas that they want to protect. Um, that can be something that the commission can talk about in the zoning regulation, when we get to the zoning regulation revisions, whether you want to split rail fence, for example, that would demarcate those areas that are meant to be pertained in a more naturalized, or maintained in a more naturalized um manner, I mean, that's something.
I just understood this to be a wetland area, so I know that usually split arrow fences are the only fence allowed at the rear of those, so my question was, is that, is, does that also apply to the site?
Yes, I mean.
Well, you could make it a condition of approval if that's what you desire.
You guys wanted to, I mean, the, 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 I think, are you talking along the, the rear property line or are you talking at where the I wanted to make that condition, you, you could.
Commissioner Saccardi.
Um, is the town aware of any previous issues with any of the neighboring properties? Because from what I'm seeing, the neighboring properties are already extending to a pretty similar extent.
They are, and you know, that's one of the things that when you have a historic pattern of development, people mow their lawns, so we're, we're trying to, in this new development, that, you know, kind of draw a line in the lawn, so to speak.
So like, I guess more so my question is just that there, there hasn't, as far as you're aware, been any major uh conservation issues as a result of the neighboring properties, correct?
I, I, my, my tenure here is short to know that, uh, but I can say what I know, I, I haven't seen anything. Commissioner, uh, Director Harrigan may know better.
Um, yeah, I, I would say that definitely along the title marshland area, there is a lot of mowing that occurs, um, and in part, again, there's not enough saltwater flushing, um, and you end up with the really tall fragmites, which limits people's ability to view some of the flora and fauna in the more regularly inundated areas where there's a lot of bird activity. Um, so, so I, I do think, and again, our conversation with um Conservation Director Bishop was, well, you know, sometimes it's actually better when they mow that stuff because otherwise the invasive fragmites takes over, so I think there's kind of a mixed, there's kind of a mixed feeling about some of the um fragmites, whether you mow or you don't mow. Um, again, I think there's mixed, mixed feelings from our Conservation Director and, you know, from our perspective, um when you allow that fragmites to end up there, there's, there, it, it blocks some of that tidal flow as well when you let it get too overwhelming, so it, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag.
But then there's no um enforcement of this no mo zone, correct? We're not.
Well, once you record this on the land records, there can be with our zoning enforcement staff.
Bron.
Here's the problem I'm having, it's, it's only a ten foot buffer to the title wetland and anything I've heard, any other excellent, we need closer to a hundred feet, so. I would like to. Has there been a motion to?
No, I was just, you were my, just about to ask for one. Would you like to make one?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve with a twenty five foot uh buffer instead of ten feet of no mo area with a fence as suggested by, uh, Commissioner Monahan.
And with the other conditions.
And all the other conditions that are recommended by staff.
Do you have a second? Commissioner Monahan, Commissioner Bron.
Yeah, so I think if you have a no mo area, then we'll see what happens and is, it, the, the town staff, uh, town Conservation Department, they do marsh restoration, things like that. If it's no mo, they don't necessarily have access to the property, right? But at least you're allowing space, if the, if the wetlands do need to migrate landward, you're allowing more space for that. There would be no space if there's lawn, we all know what happens with lawn, people keep their lawns up, so.
Right, uh, so I, yes, and I think, but.
Yeah, if, if I could clarify, there are no inland wetlands on this property, so it's not the Conservation Department's uh responsibility to enforce, it would be zoning enforcement officers in the plan and zoning office.
But, but the Conservation Department does do marsh restoration and they are involved with the tide gate, um, maintenance and things like that, so I would assume if there were fragmites or something like that, conservation could potentially work with the owners to try to rectify that, but you can't do it if you, if you, if you allow them to mow right down to ten feet, then that's, that's gone, you can't, you can't get that back. That, that was my problem with it.
They could, but they have no jurisdiction to force a property owner to participate in that program.
At least if it's no mo, they can't mow it, so would not be lawn anymore. Cause lawn is not really nature, it's almost impervious.
Commissioner Monahan seconded, so Commissioner Monahan.
I'm most concerned about people treating the properties that are D lawn and those chemicals going into the wetlands.
Uh, Commissioner Levy.
I may be confused, but my understanding from staff comment that increasing the no mo area that actually promote, uh, you know, fragmites growth in that area, which is detrimental, is that correct? That the intention was to, to mow that area so that fragmites do not take over?
That, that's been the conversation with our Conservation Director, um, you know, that again, once the fragmites gets thick, it actually acts as a preventative to more water being able to enter the site. Um, so I think his his opinion has been, you know, you do want directly on where you have tidal flushing, you do want to be able to have some sort of mitigation area, but he is concerned about fragmites taking over if there's no active mowing of the property.
So, that's one concern, so. Uh, the other is, uh, whether or not we could simply make as a condition of the coastal site plan approval that no uh treatment, uh, no pesticides, treatment or anything of that nature be allowed on this property in light of its proximity to the coastal area. Uh, and that could be enforced by zoning. I'd ask two friendly amendments, one, number one, to maintain the ten feet. To militate against the uh promulgation of the fragmites in that area. And number two, to make a condition of the coastal site plan approval that no uh treatment of the lawn with any pesticides, chemicals or anything. Um, anything of that nature be allowed.
Commissioner Bron.
I don't support that because I don't think we have a report from um Mister Bishop. And I don't think we can assume that that's what will happen, so. I think if you allow the lawn to extend within ten feet of the title wetland, you're basically creating an impervious surface, lawns are not considered natural at all, even if you don't allow pesticides, you, you still have mowing, you have leaf blowing, you have whatever you do on a lawn, so that you're not allowing any space for the title wetland to migrate to. And things in the future could be done with the, the self regulating tide gates to, to change things if you have to. And there can be programs to reduce fragmites as well in the future, so I think we need more land and, you know, rather than a hundred feet, I would say twenty five feet, that, that's a compromise that I would I, I don't think I could deviate from.
Okay, so it's Commissioner Bron's motion, so that amendment, um uh, not incorporated, so, uh, any other comments on the motion on the table? Um, I'll just say, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Levy, I, I'd support um, the motion, but for the extension of the buffer, I defer to, uh, our Conservation Director on this and we've heard concerns about fragmites on other applications that have come before us in the past, um, seems to be a persisting concern uh with the town. So I'd be more comfortable with a motion that preserves, that incorporates Commissioner Levy's comment about the pesticide uh ban on this property, but uh, leaves the proposed buffer. Okay, Commissioner Bron.
I just want as to further bolster my argument. I just want as to further bolster my argument is to read the DEP letter from 2022 on a similar property where tidal wetlands were adjacent as these are to the property. And in that letter, the DEP said tidal wetlands such as those on and adjacent to these properties will likely drown as sea level rises. If there is no upland area available for the wetlands to migrate to, um, the likelihood of the subject parcel will be inundated by rising sea level within the next 30 years. Well, now it's 25 years as projected by CIRCA, that's the Yukon um, Climate uh, Resilience and Adaptation Group. Um, and in an effort to provide future opportunity for the tidal wetlands onsite to migrate landward, with, in this case, they're just offsite. We strongly caution the applicant that absolutely no structures such as seawalls or revetments will be allowed as solutions to any future flooding erosion problems on the parcel. And structural solutions are allowed by coastal management act policies only in very limited circumstances. And proposals for future structural solutions would likely be deemed inconsistent with the coastal management act. So based on that, I would still support having the 25 foot buffer. And also adding a condition, I add a condition to my own motion, a, a condition that no future revetments or seawalls be allowed. Um, should the sea level rise to protect the, 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 the house that they're building.
Um, Commissioner Monahan, are you okay with that amendment? So uh, the motion will reflect that now. If this motion, I believe if this motion does not pass, then it amounts to rejection. So I would ask Commissioner Levy, his friendly amendment was not accepted. Uh, do you, do you wish to have your, do you wish to move to amend the motion on the table? Before we have, because otherwise we're going to go to a vote on that motion.
Yeah, I would move to amend um, to maintain the existing uh, buffer and to add the restriction regarding pesticides as well as the other restrictions. Uh, I would also note that the uh, the EEP report cited by Commissioner Braun is related to a different property. And I think if I remember correctly, that was one that was right, uh, you know, uh, that had to do with the exchange of the town property, wasn't it?
I don't know, but it was on South Pine Creek near, near here.
It was right by the bridge where there was existing, where you actually would have a revetment. So I don't think it was any way relevant to this property. So my amendment, my amendment would be to maintain the existing buffer and to not allow for pesticides.
Does the uh, Commissioner Levy's motion to amend the motion on the table have a second? Commissioner Randolph. Thank you further, Commissioner Levy.
I think further.
Commissioner Randolph.
Um, I, I appreciate the, the good intent to preserve the inland wetland, I'm sorry, our coastal wetlands and um, you know, through the regulation of a single site, but I, perhaps we're citing lack of our own zoning regulation and trying to solve that with a, an amendment for specific property, which is probably inappropriate. So I think it's a good conversation. And I think we should take up a broader uh, uh, take up this, this policy in a much broader fashion as we address tax amendments uh, with um, uh, information from experts rather than trying to solve this uh, on the copier. So uh, I appreciate the conversation and the intent, but this is the, in my mind, the wrong form to try to address these things. So I second Commissioner Levy's sensible amendment.
Thank you. Commissioner Randolph, any other comments on the motion to amend? Commissioner Bron.
Yeah, I, I appreciate um, Commissioner Randolph is saying, but this is our application before us now. We don't have to wait for a text amendment to be proposed in the future to protect the natural resource. And I just want to point out that the DEP has repeatedly told us that sea levels are predicted to rise 20 inches by the year 2050. So that's 25 years away. And that will cause the need for these tidal wetlands to migrate landward. We must allow space for that. So I cannot allow less than 25 feet. It should be a hundred feet, but given that there's a yard there and there's already getting a lawn there, I think we have to allow 25 feet to allow that in the future.
Um, this is a motion, so I can't, I can't go to Commissioner Saccardi. Uh, any other comments on the motion on the table? All right, all those in favor of the motion to amend the motion to revert the proposed buffer to the original 10 feet, uh, raise your hands. Although supposed. Okay, the motion passes five two. So uh, the motion now is to approve the application uh, with the conditions as previously noted. Uh, but with the 10, the original 10 foot buffer, all those in favor, raise your hand. Close. The motion carries five. Thank you. I'll call the next two items together. Uh, 1173 North Benson Road, compliance application of Fairfield University.
There are actually two separate applications, my apologies.
Okay, thank you. So I'll not call them together. Uh, compliance application of Fairfield University to modify the entry area of the sophomore housing uh, conference center building and revise the rear delivery and loading area in our residence R3 zone.
If, if the commission doesn't uh, mind, if it's okay, if I can do my comments from here, just so I can facilitate uh, some of the images on the screen as well. Director, um, Emmeline Harrigan, planning director for the record. Uh, so, some of the commissioners who have been on the commission for a while might recall that the uh, Fairfield University presented in 2024 an application, an application to convert a portion of the former Dolan School of Business to sophomore housing. Um, the balance of the building is used as a conference center. And it was this application that the commission reviewed and approved. It included some reorientation of the entry area as well as some additional parking. Um, and um, a reconfigured uh, loading and delivery area to the rear of the property. What is before you today is um, a slight request to reconfigure that back delivery area. And some of the associated um, driveways and um, sidewalk areas uh, primarily in the rear of the property as shown here. And then also to reconfigure the main entrance of the building, which um, you can see the before, the before in this photograph and the after in this um, proposed simulation of the front entry to the building. It just makes it a more prominent covered entranceway. Um, in reviewing the proposed revisions, they seem de minimis in nature, considering that the commission had reviewed the entirety of the other application as a um, a special exception application. Um, and I would recommend that the commission um, approve this slight change to the site plan. And the slight change to the entry.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Commissioner Bron.
Can I ask a question before we move on? Are they removing any trees? It looks like they're adding trees.
With, with the prior plan, it was a lot of lawn area. That was, that was there and they did have some planting, but they are going to be implementing uh, some screening evergreens for the loading and delivery area. So there is some additional planting that is proposed as, as part of the reconfiguration of this rear area.
There's a net adder to the tree.
Uh, I can, I can defer, uh, although usually for compliance applications, the uh, applicant does not speak. Uh, Attorney Fallon is here representing uh, Fairfield University, but my review of the plans with the, was that this was a net increase in the number of trees, but if you require.
No trees being removed from what you previously approved under the special exception. There are trees being added to further screen the relocated area of the um, loading dock. So it's a net add.
Thank you.
Other questions? Can I get a motion on the item, please? Commissioner Bron.
Motion to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Randolph, second. Yes, Commissioner Bron.
Yeah, I, it's doesn't, I'm glad that they're not reducing the trees. So they're adding trees and they're giving a minor modification to make them more functional.
Commissioner Randolph. It appeared to be a, a minimal change and I support the, the approval of the application.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Uh, next item, 1173 North Benson Road, compliance application of Fairfield University to think there might be a word missing, amend. Uh, modify parking area.
Yes, sorry.
Uh, 11 parking spaces adjacent to the alumni house in our residence R3 zone.
So the, um, thank you, uh, Emmeline Harrigan, planning director for the record. Um, this is another application by Fairfield University. The alumni house is located um, closer to the North Benson entrance of the campus. Um, fairly uh, adjacent to Fairfield Prep. Um, they are just expanding the parking area um, closer to the entrance of the alumni house, which is actually you can see the very edge of the building um, here where my cursor is. Um, just to allow more uh, functional parking for that use. Commissioner Bron, this is, um, I seem to recall that this is uh, the place where we met for the, with the Affordable Housing Committee. If, if you recall, that's the um, that's where the, the alumni house building. And so there is limited parking adjacent to that use, and they just want to expand it to allow for easier uh, parking adjacent to the building. Um, the preliminary um, uh, drainage information was reviewed by the engineering department and they just requested a condition that obviously they review and finalize that uh, any increase in stormwater mitigation that's required prior to issuance of the building permit.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Questions? Motion on the item? Levy.
You can go first.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Monahan. Commissioner Levy.
I think it's an appropriate addition to facilitate the use of the alumni house, which is a building maybe more functional.
Thank you, Commissioner Monahan.
I believe there's lack of.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, uh, raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll turn to our public hearings. List up is 3015 Bronson Road, special exception application of Fairfield day school LLC to construct an enclosure over an existing ice rink, construct a new athletic building, add associated parking areas for an existing education facility in a residence AAA zone. Thank Attorney Russo.
Need your chair? Just give me a second to set up. No microphone? Do I need one? I'm loud enough, so. I think we need it.
Your outside voice to be reset.
Yeah.
All right.
Only one side enough.
Presentation for this too, right?
There is two decks. Yeah, I'll tell you when, uh, yeah. John, the architecture one, I think is one we'll probably tell a person.
We're the one page in the PowerPoint.
Yes. All right, this is better. I'm Italian. I can use my hands. It's great. Um, uh, Chair Commissioners, uh, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzo LLC. Um, offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield, Connecticut. Here on behalf of the applicant, Fairfield Country Day. Um, first off, let me congratulate the uh, the new commissioners on the board. Um, your prizes, you get to listen to me for hours. So congratulations on that. Um, but very excited to be here um, for this development. Uh, this is for the West Campus of Fairfield Country Day, what we call the West Campus. If you know Fairfield Country Day School, Bronson Road by exit. There's the East Campus, which is where you have the school. You have the classrooms, the majority of the, of the buildings. Um, but then there's also the West Campus, um, which has uh, the ice rink, the baseball field. Um, there's a single family dwelling. Um, so it's AAA zone. Uh, it's permitted use of via special exception uh, in that zone. And it's something uh, we've been working on this project for a very long time. Um, we're very excited about the alumni, staff, students. Um, uh, there's, there's really been a tremendous amount of work um, into this and, and we're very excited about it. Um, with that, I'm going to ask, before I get into the details, uh, if the head of school, uh, Margot Pierce will come up and just speak to you uh, about this project and what it means to the, the school.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes. Um, I'm head of the school. This is my six years head. I've been at the school for 20 years. I started as an English teacher. I still am. So uh, Fairfield Country Day is, is near and dear to my heart. Um, we recognize first and foremost how important the neighborhood is and the um, historic um, kind of nature of, of where we're located. So let me, let me lead with that. Um, the, really the, the purpose of this project is to protect um, the program that already exists at the school. Uh, we have a hockey rink across the street, a skating rink, um, that's open air. In many ways, we wish we could keep it open air, but mother nature, the past couple of years has not been cooperating with us. Um, warmer temperatures, the bright sun, lots of rain makes it nearly impossible for us to keep that ice. Um, so for the boys at our school, which is um, includes grades kindergarten through grade nine, every boy skates, even the, the littlest ones. So for us, the rink has been a fundamental part of, of what we do at Fairfield Country Day and um, and for years, we've actually been debating the value of a roof. Um, and, and I think we've put it off as long as possible. Um, we're not looking to expand our program. We're not looking to go any further than just serve the boys in the way that we have for, for many, many years. Um, the athletic center, we feel is important, um, because there are no facilities over at the rink right now. So if you come to see a game or watch your little one skate, there are no bathrooms, there are no locker rooms if you're a visiting team. There's nowhere to change if you're a referee. So this um, athletic center, I think is appropriately designed really to serve um, the people who are going to be attending um, events and the players of the games. Um, we, we do have space in that facility for a fitness and wellness center that would serve all the boys. Um, but again, we've tried to be really intentional with our design. Um, and fit into the, into the neighborhood, um, the school environment and um, really just preserve our current program. That makes sense. Be happy to field more questions.
All right, well, I'll, I'll get into the details. Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, so um, getting into uh, the details of this and, and I'll just say personally, I, I've known Fairfield Country Day for many years. Two of my brothers went there. Don't hold that against them. Uh, my nephews go there uh, currently. Um, and, and so I've been familiar with school uh, all my life essentially. And uh, one of the things I've always been impressed with, with the school is its ability to um, grow and, and to um, provide for their students while also developing in a manner um, that doesn't change the character dramatically. I remember in, I think it was the nineties, that they added the gym uh, onto the east campus. If you've driven by there, um, you know, that's, that's, that's a tough thing to add to a site that's in a historic district. They use the grades um, and, and the placement of the building to really make sure it didn't overshadow um, what's that beautiful front building, that historic building that's up there. They're, they're, they've, they've really taken a lot of consideration and when they, when they develop like that. And I think you're going to see that as we go through these plans. Um, uh, and our architect will go through the plans and you'll see how they've utilized the grades here due to accomplish the same thing here on this west campus. Cause what actually happens on this site is it's, it's almost a crest of, one of the crests of Greenfield Hill. Um, this is downgrade and the grade just keeps increasing uh, up to Bronson Road. Then it carries over to the east campus and then it drops again. Um, so where this ice rink is, is actually set down uh, from the road. And I think when really the renderings that we're going to show you, you're going to see how they utilize that to um, to screen this canopy roof uh, that they're proposing over the, over the hockey rink. That combined with the athletic center um, that you see in, in that rendering uh, right there. Which, you know, just looking at it right now, it's, it doesn't look like that big of a building, but it accomplishes a big goal in screening what's that canopy roof that you see um, extending beyond it. So but I think you'll, as we go through all the plans, you'll, you'll see how this plays out. So to start us off, uh, here's the site. Again, this is the west campus. So Bronson Road is right here. Um, this is the existing site, the existing conditions. Um, one thing I pointed out here with highlighting in black, there is an additional property that Fairfield Country Day owns. Um, and there's a tennis court there and another single family dwelling. But that's, that's a separate property. The property we're really dealing with here is 3015 Bronson Road, um, which is the larger property. Uh, it's 8.8 acres. Uh, again, Again, it drops grade. You can see the contour lines here. It drops grade as you move from Bronson Road. There's a significant amount of existing mature trees right here. I have a couple of aerials that show that. There's also a substantial mature buffer, a tree buffer that extends along the southern property line. It wraps along the back. What you see here, kind of hashed out, is a two-acre conservation easement. And then what you see right here, this dark black line, is the wetlands. That already has a fence that protects it from way back when. We did, just so you know, as part of this application process, go to the Conservation, to Inland Wetlands Agency and gain their approval for what we're proposing. As far as structures existing on the site, so you have, there's a parking area, which is not really well-defined, and part of this application is to better define that parking area that's located here. There's a garage in an existing single-family dwelling here. There's a pool on the north side of that dwelling. Then, as you go back, again, you can see the lines here, drop grade. There's a maintenance building, small maintenance building and shed, which are proposed to be demolished with this application. And then you could see the existing rink, which has existed since the 80s. And then this large area here is obviously the baseball field. So those are the existing conditions. The buildings being removed are these two right here, and then the canopy roof's going above the ice rink, and then the Athletic Center is going to go here to the east. I'll show you that on the next plan.
Can you repeat which ones are being demolished?
Right. So there's a maintenance building that's right next to the ice rink, and that's being demolished, and there's a small little shed that's being demolished. And what is going in its place is right here is the Athletic Center. So this is the site plan. What you can see here first, kind of going from the road, we're proposing a few things. A walkway that heads out back towards this rink. There's really not a formal walkway there. Kids just kind of walk down this street. This will give them a path, a lighted path, that goes down to the rink and to the Athletic Center. This is also, this drive's being redone. Part of that is in conversations with the fire marshal. We went through code review and worked with them on this design, which you see has the sort of hammerhead turnaround down here. The other thing we have is just definition to these parking areas. It is an existing parking area. It's just kind of open. There's no lines delineated or anything like that. So we're installing pervious pavers here and striping it to create 42 spaces that, you know, if a parent was coming to see their kid, they could park here and then walk down to the ice rink. The other is putting in a drive here on the northern end for circulation and just better flow of traffic. Instead of going in, if you've seen that drive, it's pretty narrow that heads down to the rink. As far as structures, this outline right here is the canopy roof that would go over the ice rink, protect it from the elements, particularly the sun. Our architect will go through the design of it. It is not an enclosed structure. Enclosing the structure would make it a lot more intense as far as, because then it's got to be climate-controlled, so it's going to have a lot in the way of mechanicals. It just makes it much more involved. And, you know, as Ms. Pierce was sharing with you, they're not looking to change their program. They've offered hockey. They're not expanding their program at all. They're really looking to just kind of protect this resource that we have and operate as they have been. So this is just an open air. It has certain ends that are enclosed, and our architect will go through that, particularly the southern end, to protect our neighbors to the south who are the closest to us. But again, it's not a fully enclosed structure. Off of this is a 8,400 square foot Athletic Center. And then in place of that maintenance garage that is being demolished, there's this, which holds the rink mechanicals and the Zamboni. And then this structure right here, it's actually not a structure. It's a pervious patio that's going to be at the entrance to, you can see it there on the rendering, the entrance to the Athletic Center. This is an overhead look that shows the existing landscaping. Again, there's a lot of existing tree buffer along the eastern property line and then along the southern property line as well. The setback here is 30 feet, so this is a compliance setback in the AAA zone. We're keeping it off 30 feet, and that allows to protect this. It also continues on to our neighbor to the south, who we've met with, the Chisandis. They have some of that buffer that continues on their property. So there's really a nice buffer there. On top of that, we are proposing additional landscaping. And we've also talked with the Chisandis, and we've talked with another neighbor about working with them as this is developed to ensure that we have a screen here to protect those neighbors visually from what they see. And, you know, I think it's going to be an improvement to the neighborhood, particularly from a sound aspect as well, with this being enclosed on this side. And then also, architects will walk through some of the sound mitigation measures that they built into the canopy that helps mitigate that puck sound that the neighbors hear. And so, yeah, we're looking both visually and, you know, an audio aspect of reducing the impact to our neighbors. But we also have plantings all around this patio. We've submitted the details on this in our landscape architects on Zoom to answer any questions you have with regard to that. But additional landscaping proposed throughout the development. These are just two pictures. I gave you the cut sheets on this. We submitted this part of the application that has the details. These are the two main lighting fixtures through the property. So this would be along the walkway. And this is what's proposed on the building, the Athletic Center primarily. And they're dark sky compliant. We submitted a photometric plan with regards to that. I checked with them to make sure it was dark sky compliant and it met the standards for that to make sure we don't impact the neighborhoods. The other thing I'll say about this, and I don't know if I said it at the top, this property is located in a historic district. So if you were to approve this application, our next step would then be to submit to HDC, and they would have final say. So we're proposing these now. I just don't know if HDC might ask to change these if, for some reason, they don't feel that it's consistent with the historic district. But we obviously worked with that. We actually had a pre-application meeting with Historic. You know, again, because it is such a large project, to meet with them and get a feel from them and how they felt the look of it was. So we think we're in line with what they wanted, but they would have ultimate say over materials and a lot of things. Materials of the walkways, but lighting being one of them. The other nice thing with this kind of redevelopment of the site is that we get to add a significant amount of drainage to the property. When the rink was first constructed back in the 80s, there just wasn't the drainage standards that there are today, particularly the 10:2 standard, which I can't tell you more about that. I'll let the engineer if you want to hear about the 10:2 standard. But what we're able to do with this process is bring the rink and the canopy now up to that 10:2 standard, up to the current drainage standards, as well as the Athletic Center that's being constructed. So as you can see here, a significant amount of drainage being added to the site, which, you know, it's an overall improvement to the neighborhood. And with that, I think those are the extent of my site plans. Yep. Sorry. Yeah, go on.
Quick question. So on the left, that apron thing, what is that for, again?
This right here?
To the left of the rink, that long rectangular thing, left of that, what is that?
That's the drainage system. So I think these are, those are the cul-de-sacs. Yes.
Already got a wetlands permit?
We already went to Conservation and submitted that to them. Yep. And it was approved. But again, so there's also, just so you know, wetlands-wise, it's hard to see because it's faint. But if you looked at the plans, there's a fence line here that protects the wetlands. There's actually, as part of the wetlands approval, we're adjusting that fence a little bit out to protect this little area that hokes out here. But to fully protect it, make sure no students just go running into the wetlands and stuff like that.
Can you give us a copy of the wetlands permit?
Sure. Yeah, we can. It's, it's, it's.
File.
It could, it could be in, it might be in the file. If not, well, that's no problem. So that's it from a site development point. Do you want me to go right to the architect, or do you want me to just stay with engineering questions right now? Well, you have your engineer coming up, right? Well, if there was a particular question to them, they can jump up and answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I was going to turn it over.
I have a quick question. How much is the increase in impervious surface? Are you adding a few buildings? You're taking away a few? You're taking away some trees, but are you adding some trees?
So coverage, building coverage is going to 8.7%. 10% is permitted in the zone, so we're still under coverage.
In terms of increases in pervious, it's all on the right side. Very little is on the left side, except for the drainage system. I mean, the pervious surface you're adding is not near the wetland. It's on the other side for the most part. That's my.
Attorney Russo, who was planning on actually speaking, other than asking, answering questions? The architect is going to have a presentation. That's it. That's it. And then I'll go over, we have traffic. If, I was going to just go over traffic, but we have traffic and then landscape. Our landscape architect's also on the line if you had questions for them. I think we're going to make presentations. Why don't we go to the architect, see any other questions that aren't answered?
Good evening, Commissioners. Eric Keier, KGD Architects. Thanks for seeing us tonight. Our presentation's actually on the screen here. I know that Chris Russo went through a lot of the site.
Start from here?
Start from the beginning, actually, because it's in color. What you saw before was all in black and white in two dimensions. So this might just be a little bit helpful. You're looking from the north, looking south. You can see on the left there, diagonally, that's Bronson Road. The main campus is in the top-left corner. The campus that we're looking at, West Campus, is the balance. You can see the baseball field and the existing ice rink that's open air today. Next slide. This is a straight-on vertical. Now, north is facing straight up the page. So again, you can see the existing open-air ice rink in the middle and the bottom. Our septic field is just to the right of that. The baseball field is just above. The house with the pool is right in the middle. That's a faculty residence. And there's some existing parking that's underneath those existing trees. And you can see, running east-west is the driveway, which leads from the main campus to the rink. And immediately below that is where we're planning to have a sidewalk, which will connect from the main campus to that rink. We already just talked about this one, so we can skip over this slide. And now we're going to see four or five slides right in a row, which is basically the sequence of events leading, starting from Bronson Road. So we're right across the street on the main campus. We're walking across the street to the West Campus. You can see in the bottom-left corner there, that's an existing-conditioned photograph. That's what it looks like today. These are renderings. They're computer-generated renderings. So that whole wooded area, which is actually a berm on the left, it has a stone wall. It also has the old windmill that's just off the screen right here. I think you just see just a tiny tip of it right there. All that's existing to remain, no change whatsoever. The driveway itself gets a little wider. You can see in the distance straight ahead that that's the existing faculty residence that's straight down the driveway. And then just to the left of that, you're going to see that's the roof and a little bit of the side of the rink itself. From where we are in Bronson down to that rink, it actually drops a full level, about 12 feet. The next one, please. So now we're halfway down that walkway. The walkway splits at this point. Again, on the right side there, you can see the faculty residence. The driveway leads straight to where the rink is. You can see that that rink at that end, we say it's a covered rink. It's not, there's no mechanical ventilation or anything like that, or no mechanical systems. But it does have some side walls. The north end you'll see is open. The south end is completely enclosed. And you can see in this view that the proposed Athletic Center, which is really more of an Athletic Center, so a little bit of a misnomer. It's really a support building for the baseball program and the hockey program. As you heard earlier, it has locker rooms, it has coaches' space. There is a stretching area, and there's, both on the ground level and the upper level, an indoor, interior space where you can watch the hockey game. Now you're getting a little closer, and you can see that the way that this Fieldhouse Athletic Center is stationed up on top of the hill, it's actually, you're entering here on the upper level, and the rink is an entire story down. This building really shields a vast majority of that rink. It's only as you're walking down the driveway itself that you really see the north end of the rink. Here, you're looking from the north, so the north end of the rink is open air. You can see it's exposed at that end. It's also exposed on the two sides. And here, you actually have a pretty good view of how this area pitches down. We've already come down three or four feet by the time we're where we are. It extends down about another seven or eight feet down to where the rink is. The entrance to this Athletic Center is right between those two buildings. Next one. So now we're at the north end, looking towards the south end. You can see that south end is completely enclosed, as well as the two side walls on the south end. That's purposeful so that the noise doesn't extend out towards the south. This is a steel-framed structure. It has a wood deck ceiling. It has acoustic panels on the ceiling. About 33% of that ceiling is acoustic panels, and this has been worked in collaboration with our acoustic engineer, who's been looking at this to make sure that the sound level's acceptable, not just inside the rink itself, but also as you get down to the property line. So not only, we have the acoustic panels here, but just outside, if you went out to the site today, there is a sound wall. That sound wall will either stay where it is or might shift slightly, but it's planned to be maintained. So sound at that property line will be reduced from its current conditions. Maybe a little difficult to see, but this is the ground level. So this is the level of the ice rink. At the bottom of the page is the warming room. We have a coach's office. We have some bathrooms for visitors, et cetera. And then at the top of page, we have locker rooms, two separate locker rooms and toilet rooms for the two teams. And to the right, we have a storage room, the Zamboni room, and the mechanical room, which is associated with all the ice rink equipment and keeping the ice cool. Next one. So this is a view inside in that warming room. To the right, you can see, looking out to the rink. And to the left, where the boys are coming out, that's coming straight from the locker rooms. Next one. So this is the upper floor. From the top of the page, that's on grade. There's a terrace just beyond, which you saw in a couple of the earlier versions. And actually, right here, in this rendering, you can see that you're looking onto that terrace, two double set of doors, which is at the top of the page. And that's a fitness and wellness center. At the bottom of the page is the upper level, which we're calling the Hall of Fame Room. It's the room that you'll be on the upper level, looking out at the hockey games that are happening just below you. There's also a team room. There's a pantry and a couple bathrooms up there. And the last picture is of the wellness. So this is, again, a fitness, it's a multipurpose space. If we were to spin around, you would look right out to the east, to that terrace and to the lawn that's beyond. But that gives you a little flavor of the architecture and what we're planning to do, and how, from Bronson, it's visually set very far back as well as down the hills. Very far back as well as down the hills.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Eric. Um, just some. Some things to add to that, um, the height to the midpoint of the. Canopy roof is twenty-two feet. Um, so with the grades talking about, i- it really. Plays well into kind of reducing how much of that structure you see, and then also again, this. Athletic Center in the front being placed in the middle, um, I just think does a great job of breaking up. Um, what, you know, because it covers a rink, it's, it's, it's a large roof structure. Um, just to visually, uh, break that up, again, you know, it, it, for schools, it's difficult, I mean, I can think of some schools. Um, that have, uh, many football stadiums essentially. And, uh, I know G F A just did a squash court, it's a very, very large building. It's hard to hide some of those buildings that are associated with schools. And I think Eric has done a fantastic job, again. Um, you know, it's in a historic district, so being cognizant of that and trying to provide for the students, it's a really nice amenity, there's not many schools that have. Uh, an ice rink like this, I know prep has to go to Wonderland of Ice, at least that's what they did when I was there. Um, so to have it onsite is, is a tremendous asset, um, to the student body. Um, and I think Eric's done a, a really nice job in trying to, uh, to be considered of the neighborhood. Um, and, and control, and, and minimizing the impact, um, and as he stated, again, we've worked with acoustical engineer. Uh, to make sure we mitigate the sound, um, and reduce it actually from. Existing levels, uh, what they hear now. Uh, the other thing, um, in, in talking with the, the Fairfield Country Day staff, that's gonna be a huge improvement is. Because it's covered and it's protected from the elements, they don't have to. Treat the ice as much as they do now, so I actually didn't know this, when, when you snow on an ice rink, it's a problem if you leave it. Like you can't have a snowstorm and just leave it to the next day, it's gonna ruin the ice, so they have to go out there and zamboni it. As the storm is kind of going on, and now the roof is gonna be protected from that, so. It's, you know, it's, it's some added benefit, they use a skid steer to do that, so there's just a lot of stuff that happens when there's a storm like that. So it, it, it provides a lot of, a lot of extra benefit. We also, um, retained a Neil Olinsky, um, he may have jumped on, uh, on the claw, I, I think he might be on, but. I, I can go through Neil Olinsky, um, with S L R, um, he analyzed, uh, the traffic impact, we submitted his report. Um, the key findings from it are that no traffic impacts are anticipated. Um, a- and this is the key, the school is not increasing enrollment or classroom capacity tied with this, right? So it's not that there's gonna be more, uh, students, uh, you know, at Fairfield Country Day. Um, the rink already accommodates games and visiting teams, um, the parking's really just being improved. Um, from, from what it's kind of existing informal, uh, conditions are. Um, there's no anticipated negative impacts to surrounding, uh, properties. There have been no crashes at the school driveways for the past three years. Um, there were two that were down at the intersection with Verna Hill, um, and they were only property damage, uh, no serious injury. Uh, he didn't observe any unusual crash patterns, um, related to, uh, the school's, uh, driveways. Uh, he analyzed the peaks and the traffic, the two he analyzed were weekday afternoon and the Saturday. Um, he didn't do weekday morning because that's, that's not when they utilize the athletic center and the games, so you don't. You don't drive to the school on Monday morning and go right to the hockey rink, um, so he, he analyzed when there would be games. Um, and, um, one of the things, when you're reading the report, that I think's, uh, important too. He analyzed it and made his findings as if it, this was additional. That this was like, oh, an additional parking requirement. He said he could have taken a credit, because what's probably going to practically happen is folks who park at, park at the East Campus. Are gonna park at the West Campus, so he's gonna reduce traffic there on the East Campus. But to be conservative, he just acted like it was a, a, a new parking area and that there would be new traffic there. And, and so he didn't apply any type of credit, um, and what he found was that there would be no changes, uh, to any levels of service. Um, he also looked at the intersection site distances and found that there were sufficient, uh, site distances for the driveway. Um, there's four hundred thirty-four feet looking south and four hundred twenty-three feet, uh, looking north. Um, so, um. Otherwise, I think that addresses all the technical aspects. Um, if there's any questions regarding any of those, again, we have our landscape architect that believes online. Um, we have our engineers here, did you want to answer the question about the, the imperviousy, I wanted you to come up and answer that one?
Evening, everyone, Kurt Longstein for the record, licensed professional engineer, uh, in Connecticut with. Uh, we handle all the site civil aspects, so, Mr. Brown, your question was new impervious area generated. Roughly eighty-five hundred square feet of new impervious area, I mean, certainly there's a lot of impervious area being collected. Majority of that is driveways that are being resurfaced, the parking areas are there now as Chris mentioned, and they're gonna be pervious. So it's really building and some additional walkways, a little expansion of some of the driveways. You know, the rink is there, the canopy is going over it, um, we are collecting that, but it's roughly eighty-five.
So they, they're having previous like pavers for some of the parking area?
So these two parking banks, which now, if you've gone out there, it's kind of compacted grass, gravelly area. Though, these will be pervious, uh, parking, and then the patio itself will also be pervious.
On the left side, that was just a stormwater system, that was not, uh, like, a, a platform, uh, that, um, to the left of the rink, there was like a rectangle.
They're, so.
Drainage is down.
And that's been approved by.
Wetlands has reviewed and approved this. Yeah, so there's two new large drainage systems that are going in, one down below the rink. Um, and then one adjacent to the patio. So this will, this system basically collects kind of this half of the site. And then the, uh, system down here collects basically Athletic Center to this.
Is there no drainage system there now?
There is, there's a very small one, it's, it's right in this area here, it's kind of right up against the actual conservationism, but very small system.
It wouldn't conform to today's standards, the ten to two, this was back when the rink.
And how tall is? I, I, I didn't hear what you said, how high?
The, the, for, for the midpoint of the roof is twenty-two feet.
It's a lot taller, you mean, inside the rink, it's only twenty-two feet high?
The, the actual canopy is twenty, is twenty-two feet.
And how about the build, the, uh, the house structure, the building structure?
Building structure to the midpoint, um. Yeah, and that's on a different grade, uh. Let me see if I.
It's kind of buried into the hill, so, depends on which side you're looking at as far.
What is the footprint of the? Athletic.
Uh, it's some bowls.
It's around eight thousand.
Well, that's the new and purpose of the Athletic Center itself is about fifty-five hundred square, the, the floor plate of it.
Because half, half the Athletic Center is actually below grade. So the height of it is, is, uh, less than, is around the same twenty-two feet.
So, and how close is it to the nearby houses, it looks like, um, you're gonna have screening, some of those trees are not being disappeared, like that are.
Right, and with those within the thirty-foot setback, someone might have to be. But the intent is not to remove them, um, so the one that shows it the best is this one. So here's the thirty-foot setback, the red line for the triple A zone, so as you can see, um, we're outside of that, and all these trees here. Um, there might need to be some pruning on some of these, um, but the hope is to prefer, preserve, uh, these trees.
Thank you.
And then add in here, and here, and here, but again, we've met with the, um, Jasanis, we met with, with another neighbor today. And we're, and that's the neighbor to the south, the Jasanis, and we're, we're gonna work with them to make sure we screen. You can see their driveway right down here, it's probably another aerial to do that and screen, but luckily, I think we have some. Advantage here again, in that they're sitting up at a higher grade than this, than this, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, this building.
Commissioner Saccardi?
Yeah, just, um, information for the record, um, just based on the actual impact study that was performed. Um, no direct impacts are proposed, all the delineated wetlands will remain completely undisturbed, the project has been designed to avoid encroachment into wetland boundaries with all construction activity. Review area. Um, and the overall project, while it will result, uh, result in a modest increase in the impervious surface area. The increase is offset through the pervious pavers in the parking and patio areas, along with a cert, subsurface infiltration system. Designed to capture, store and treat runoff before discharge. Habitat fragmentation is not anticipated, as the wetlands will remain intact and protected. And the existing conservation easement of nearly two acres will continue to provide preserved natural habitat and connectivity. For any concerns the commissioners might have.
What he said. Plus, I would just say on top of that, just so you know, th- in, in looking at this plan, so again, here's the wetlands line, this is the upland review line. And so what you could see is it really, the only place it crosses into the upland review area is here, and that's where. The rink's there already, so, I mean, that's, it's just going over where the rink is already, and then that, those drainage systems that Kurt was showing.
Commissioner Monahan?
So. Just for information, so the opening is on the side closer to the baseball field.
The, the large opening on the north end that you see here is closer to the baseball field, so in that rendering. Where you see it wide open on that side, the baseball field's to your right.
I've never seen a rink, I've been in a lot of ice rinks, I've never seen a rink like this, is it? Is there a benefit to not closing it in, in terms of making it completely soundproof for the neighbors, or is it just cost?
I, it, it, it definitely amps up the, I guess I'd say the intensity of the structure. Because it's going to have, then it's gotta have mechanicals, it's climate controlled, um, and so, we. And, and we're, and this isn't something where we're looking to make this into. Wonderland of Ice, for example, where this is, you know, where this is like, you know, you'll, we'll have multiple teams in here and. You know, it's a public skating rink, that's not what we're looking to do, we're looking to provide for the students at Fairfield Country Day, so. It, this allows them to utilize it for the duration of their season, which they're having an issue with right now. Because of the melting, um, but it's not extending. You know, it's not extending Fairfield Country Day Hockey yet to nine o'clock at night or anything like that, and that's what, yeah, it, it's, it's keeping it as. As they currently have their program, um, and, and I think there are, we did, where's Eric? There were other, there were other locations that had these types of roofs, you don't see them often, but I think we, we had seen roofs like this and other.
Well, there's a certain percentage of the walls that you want to have open, and if you don't have enough openings, then you're gonna have to have a mechanical system, so. It was basically a balance between where do we want to put solid walls to, to protect neighbors? While at the same time keeping enough of the percentage of the exterior wall open so that this pre-year.
Thank you, Commissioner Randolph.
Um. You got my questions.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to read my mind. Lighting is in there, photometrics in there. The tree survey, we put the tree survey in.
Yes.
Okay, did I get it? I'm learning, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I, I do.
Cause it's really awkward, we can't see anybody.
Yeah, okay, sure.
So you're, you're getting there, your light fixture is, uh, dark sky compliant, but it's not full cutoff. Okay, so can we, I'm sorry, where's the ar, who's the architect? Can, can we get full cutoff for the lights?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Uh, yeah, that bag of light is not, it's not full cutoff, uh, cause light, it, lights and noise, right? Everybody's gonna care about, um, and then I didn't see a, I saw a photometric study just of the lighting paths, I didn't see a light trespass study. Is, is there one in here, light trespass?
I thought it was, I thought it did cover the.
No, I, it just, it covers the path, there's a, there's a, a, a drawing that shows lights, that shows the illumination on the path. What's the light trespass on the?
Looking for it at the property line, Commissioner? Sorry?
Looking for at the property.
At the property line? I think we don't have it extend all the way to the property.
Yeah, it just covers the path. Oh, I'm gonna close it up. So it, um, doesn't look like it's an issue, those, those, uh.
The lumens are pretty low at the edge of what they're doing, but I'm just concerned looking at.
And, uh, you know, these lights are really bright, the, yeah, that's not, it's not the, you're showing me the.
So here, just so you. It's the end of the rink, so there's another thirty feet to the property.
I, I can read that, we, but we don't have a light trespass.
You're looking for something to show what it is at the property end.
Yeah. Oh, cause that's, neighbors are gonna care about that, and then this open end right here, the lights aren't properly shielded. Uh, you're gonna have feedback, uh, so. If, if we get, make sure those, all those lights are shielded properly, cause they're, you know, these, rink is, I mean, what's the? What's, what, what's the foot candles at a rink, it's really high, right?
But I think the, the open end is on the baseball field side, on the opposite end.
It's, it's gonna create like a big glow, and a dark, in a very dark town.
So you're talking about the perceived, the, that, less so the trespass of the property, but just look, like, like a stadium light, you can see it from along this.
Exactly, yeah, so if you guys could provide that.
Yeah, well, the illumination will just hit the rink, but I think what you're concerned about is. Just the glow of, of the space from here.
Cause it, you know, we're, we've got a lot of schools in the area and get a lot of feedback.
Feedback, yes.
From, uh, from, from town, people in the town about, you know, lights at Sacred Heart, lights at Fairfield U, lights at the high school, so. And this is a very dark part of town, it's really, the sky's really dark up there, so. Uh, if you guys could study that and make sure that's all shielded, second topic.
You're good.
I saw the, um, looks like you're cutting down a lot of trees.
So.
That, that, you've got a drawing of.
This, yeah, he, he, uh.
I, I did do an harvest assessment of the property.
Yourself.
Yeah, Brian, I'm Brian Perry, uh.
But on S B one, I feel all the trees cutting down, that's your drawing.
It's on the survey, yeah.
Um.
Want to talk about the conditions?
Looks like a lot more. The red dots.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's only about four hundred.
Most of them are small, but some of them are big, can we replace them with D B H inches?
We talked about that, some of the, uh, did do a one for one, like, study of the D B H. It's probably not practical about the amount of size, uh, the amount of trees we'd have to put out there with. That being said, a lot of the trees that are slated for review, you show significant, like, they, they need to come down, and you face at this point.
Free canopy up there is, you know.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to retain most of the. So along this, along this wall, we're trying to retain, uh, some of the trees that are there. Um, there's a bunch of leaners, uh, that are, that are exist. Uh, this spruce line, obviously, this line of, uh, it, it's mostly Norway spruce and blue spruce. That's obviously gotta come out, because that's in the footprint of the building. You know, we've tried, we, you know, we're maintaining, uh, pretty much all of the, uh, buffer, um, along this edge. Um, it's really just in the, in the parking lot area, uh, where bulk of the trees.
Twenty-four back in the.
Yeah, so that twenty-four, this thirty-six inch, uh. I mean, that's, it's got a hole in it, that's, yeah, if, if there's, I mean, there's no way to protect that, or would I protect that? And then this one up here.
By the rink.
One by the ring?
One right, this one right here.
Uh, I mean, we can look, I think that is also within the grading footprint of, of the.
Can you replace the D B H else, I mean, you got a big piece of property.
So we do have a bunch of ornamental trees going in along.
Across the street, maybe?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that's something we can look at for sure.
Yeah. The tree canopy is, it's just so fragile up there.
So this, they, they do have a parcel over here, that's pretty much completely wooded. Um, you know, most of the areas, and again, this is all in conservation easement, so there's a big buffer here. Uh, that will be maintained in perpetuity, cause that can't be cut.
And there's one, there's one up here too, there's a lot of trees right up here, I think as well.
So, and then, you know, they've have over time replanted this buffer in the front with all.
I know the site well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's nice, but you cut trees down and.
Try to tuck them in as much, and, and again, uh.
Or even, even across the street.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Um, what about the thirty-six inch? That's the one with the hole in it? This one right here?
Correct, yeah.
Uh, answer your question.
I mean, you have to, so this, you know, this is an unimproved parking lot, so. Over time, the people just, it, it has been cleared for snow, but also just the, just driving in here is compacted the root. Uh, the root system, so all of these trees that are within this area, you can go out and see that they all are suffering from crown dieback. Which is a result of a compacted root system. Um, so, and when we started planning this project early on, I, we looked at all this, I was like, this, you know, strategically, it's.
So just, just lastly, it, it's a really thoughtful contextual project. Um, a lot of thoughts gone into it. It's, it's a nice project and it's. You know, I see that, you know, it, it's, it's a good amenity for the school, but you guys have put a lot of time and thought in it. It's, it's. It's a, it's a quality project, the kind of stuff we.
Well, we, we, we could actually look in the easement, you are allowed to plant in the easement, so that would be, that would provide.
Anywhere on the property would be.
Understood.
Or across the street.
Commissioner Monahan.
Uh, I just have a question about. School buses or cars at night, or, you know, with neighboring properties.
Um, it's gonna run the same way that. It has, I think, by widening the driveway and looking at people to correct me if I'm wrong. But there would be, there would be the ability for team buses to then pull down that driveway. Um, or what they do currently is they go on the east campus, correct? Okay, so I'm getting nuts. Um, so that would essentially remain the same. And then if you're a parent, now you have the convenience that there's going to be, doesn't show it on here, but on the other one it does, then you're gonna have that, that parking area there.
Now, it's gonna be a little later at night, obviously.
But they're not planning on changing their, their, their programs with regards to times. So I think it's after, after school, I'm guessing is when, yeah, exactly. Convenience wise, it's just after school.
Is that rink at all or not?
No.
Too bad.
So I got a couple of questions, but most of them are gonna be preempted by my first question, which is, have any electrical or mechanical studies or estimates been done for this project? At this current phase?
Electric, electrical studies, I don't.
Any kind of estimates, like watts per square foot, for example, just as an estimate?
Uh, we have a full set of mechanical, electrical plans that we can share with you.
That would be fantastic, um, because most of my questions are gonna be follow-ups on that. Uh, for example. Your site plan lists your electrical transformers existing to remain. My assumption is that that's based on the existing capacity of that transformer.
That's right.
And the estimated new load of this, uh, athletic center will fall within the actual capacity of that existing transformer. There's no estimated. Um, need for an additional or upgrade to the existing transformer system, correct?
That's correct.
Um, additionally.
Again, I can, we can provide you a full set of mechanical, electrical plans, site and building plans, so.
Yeah, now that would be greatly appreciated. Um, the HP one condenser listed, is that just the horsepower for that condenser in the building?
Um, yes.
I, I know you're the, you're the architect on the project, not necessarily the MVP side of stuff.
If you get into too much detail, I might not be.
That's fair.
On my best.
Um, and then I guess, I, I don't know if you know the answer, do you know what the, uh, heating plans are for the building, what type of heating system they'd be using? Cause you have a large mechanical room, uh, on the upper levels of the building.
Actually. Do you know that?
Yeah, we're gonna put, or we're gonna take.
I'm, I'm mainly asking, is it like heat pumps, electric, or using gas?
Yeah, I'm Chris Lutrell. Um, uh, Director of Operations at school. We're gonna use the off energy from the rink. Um, electric heat pump system to heat the building and cool the building. And also melt the Zamboni snow and stuff like that.
Thank you.
All right, you have any questions? Attorney Russo, anything else?
Uh, I will just quickly, I'm sorry, run through your standards for special exception. I think we've talked a lot of these thoroughly, but that the location type, character and size of use of buildings and structures. Um, shall be in harmony, um, with the neighborhood, um, and and with regulations, uh. Again, we've taken a lot of care to reduce the impact visually of, uh, of what's being proposed. Um, we are not over coverage, we're staying under coverage still for what's permitted in that zone. Um, and this use is permitted, uh, in the triple A zone. Um, the nature and location of the use in buildings or structures shall be such that there will be adequate access for fire protection. We've worked with the fire marshal regarding access down to the rink. That's why the driveway is being widened and and what you see there at the end. Um, that was again in in conversations, um, with the fire marshal. The next is that the streets serving the proposed use shall be adequate to carry prospective traffic. Um, provision shall be made for entering and leaving the property without creating undue hazard to traffic or congestion. Uh, we've submitted a traffic report showing we are not changing the levels of service, but then also demonstrating. Uh, that, uh, we have adequate site distances. Um, that the landscaping be provided in accordance with, uh, uh, the regulations of, we've done that. And and again, we're, we're, we're preserving a significant buff, buffer that we have along our, our property lines. Um, and that the proposed use, uh, shall be in conformity with the master plan of the town. Again, this is. This permitted use, this Fairfield Country Day has been along, around for a very long time. Um, and, uh, and and this is an important step in their growth in the town to keep, uh. Educating, uh, uh, boys and young men on Fairfield, aside from my brothers. Um, with that, uh, any other questions?
Good for now. Okay, uh, that will conclude the initial presentation. We'll go to public comment. If anyone is joining. Remotely that wishes to be heard in this item, please, uh, indicate. So either in chat or by pressing the raise hand button. Is there any member of the public in person that wishes to be heard?
Good evening, uh, my name is Martin Berger. Uh, I'm one of the four property owners that is joining this project. I live at, uh, twenty-nine oh five Bronson Road. Uh, I've been there for about fifty years. Uh, I'd like to. Just. Circulate a moment of document. They may want to share, this was a. Uh, a matter that was. Years, but, uh, nineteen, uh. Eighty-seven. Uh, where, uh, there was a special permit for this, uh, rink. I don't have a copy of. I just gave you, but. I'll just read it, uh, to you, so we all understand, uh, what happened back in, uh. Thirty-eight years ago, before this rink was built and the, and the neighbors were involved. So this is dated February seventeenth, nineteen eighty-seven, special exception. Section twenty-seven point zero thirty-one fifteen Bronson Road, Project Ice skating rink, Fairfield Country Day School. Okay, number one. Solid screen of evergreen trees must be planted between the rink and the southerly property line to ensure all season screening. Number two, no excessive noise or continuous noise. Equipment is permitted as per town notice ordinance. Reading, no outdoor lighting is allowed and no after dark activity will be permitted. Number four, a bond shall be posted to ensure completion of all special exceptional requirements. The bond figure will include the proposed drainage system. And it was filed with the, with the town clerk. So that, we were in front of this. Board a couple of times way back when, faces are different, but. The, the matter was, was the same. So where, where are we today? Unfortunately, I could not see what Attorney Russo showed here. But if, if you take the, the building that he showed you, which that, like about twenty-two feet in height. It's actually eight feet more. It's, it's actually thirty feet when you look at the building with the, with the way the roof is constructed. Uh. Uh, if you, Attorney Russo, can you put that picture back up again? That you showed with the twenty-two foot roof.
You're talking about.
Whatever it is. Yeah, then, then it's the eight feet above it. It's, it's the way they measure it.
We have on the computer, it might be the ele, it, it, it's the elevation plans.
The rendering or the.
When I went over to plan and zone boards.
Sure.
Twenty-two feet, one measurement, but the actual.
To the ridge, yeah.
So. You see this piece up here? He, he's measuring twenty-two feet here, but it's actually thirty feet. So, so here, here is the issue. Uh, met with, um, Mrs. Pierce, or I met with her this afternoon. Uh. They're good neighbors. We, we don't want to cause a, a real problem with them. However, the bottom line is this. First of all, the, number one, the trees were never planted. Uh, if you look at the rink today. Uh, you have, you know, the wizard base. Plastic, uh, around the top. And on the far south end, they built a wooden sort of sound barrier. So in other words, when the shots are fired with the, with the hockey puck, which sounds like a shotgun. The sound is sort of deadened, but that would then build around there. So, uh, as far as the noise is concerned, we, we solved that problem because with the Zamboni. What they have, they're, they're gonna build a new garage for it. But they don't run the Zamboni at night. Uh, even though they, you know, they have issues with the weather. The, the, the noise of Zamboni we hear during the day, but it's no big deal. We've all used the, the shotgun effect of the hockey pucks. That's not gonna stop. Uh, but the, but the real problem that we have, and if, if you look at the. Uh, the outside of the rink facing south, that's where our homes are, okay? Uh, you see the, the gray painted wooden, uh, barrier that may be ten feet tall. Uh, and outside of that. To our property, there's nothing but scrub trees. So they, so they never planted the, the trees that they were supposed to in this plant. So here we are in, in talking with, um, Mrs. Pierce today. Uh, they're bringing down their, um. Uh. Specialist from. I think he's coming from Boston tomorrow, that's gonna talk to the neighbors. Uh, about what the, uh, cover is gonna look like. To, to protect a thirty-foot wall building that's gonna be facing our property. Now. How that's gonna play out? I don't know. Uh. I'm sure you can plant trees that, that will eventually grow thirty or forty feet tall. Uh, to protect that, that whole. Uh, side of the building that's, that's facing our property. Uh, we'll have to see how that plays out. I'm very pleased to hear that the drainage situation is being straightened out because when it rains like the devil. Those, that, those properties going down, uh, the west, uh. There, it's really mushy back there. So that will be straightened out, but, but that's not the real issue. So, uh, all I'm asking, uh, to commission tonight. Is to postpone any decision until we can come back and have some type of agreement. On how we're going to, uh. Shield that southerly. Side of the building that's facing our properties. And of course. When, when you look at something like that and you're gonna try to sell your property, you say, you know, why am I looking at a barn, you know? Structured like. Steel structured, it looks like that. So that's, that's my issue and that's all. That's all we're asking you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public in the room who wish to be heard? Smullen, anyone online? Is anyone joining online who wishes to be heard? Please raise your hands or sign in the chat.
David Nardone.
That's our landscape architect.
That's our landscape architect. What?
That's our landscape architect.
Oh, okay. You could raise his hand.
Probably to address, address the comment, yeah.
Can you, can you, can everyone hear me? Hear me okay?
Let's wait till rebuttal.
David, you're gonna have to wait.
Okay.
Okay, uh, last call, anyone, any member of the public wish to be heard? Um, can do that on rebuttal, yeah. Um, okay, uh, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Thing and we'll go back to Attorney Russo for results.
Okay, um, I, I think David Nardone's on, he's gonna want to speak, but I just wanted to, um, and he's our landscape architect, but I did just want to address. So. What, what Mr. Burger's talking about, I think is what regards to the height, the, your regulations. Measure to the midpoint of the roof, so twenty-two feet to the midpoint, and then it's a few more feet to the ridge. Um, uh, but that, that's, that's not how the zoning regulations measure, but we're happy to. Me, we were already meeting tomorrow with the landscape architect and the Jisandis, who are. The Jisandis are to the south of us, and then Mr. Burger is the next property to the south. So he would. Benefit as well from these plantings. We, we have no issue with, um. With planning evergreens to try to screen those neighbors. They're, they're a little bit closer to Bronson Road. And again, we have that grade drop off, so we think we're gonna be able to utilize that to screen that building. Um, from those neighbors, uh, to the south. I don't know what happened in the original, with the original approval. Clearly, it was approved. And it's been in compliance, there's been no violation on it. I was eighty-six, I was born in eighty-five, but we could ask Jim, Jim might know. Jim, I think Jim started, Jim went and started in nineteen eighty-six. So he might, he might know what happened then. Um, but we also feel we aren't violating, and sorry, I was just gonna grab. That approval. Um. Again, we're happy to plant the evergreen trees. Um. Uh, to screen our neighbors, uh, the no excessive noise or continuous noise, again, that. We worked with an acoustical engineer on that, and that's why, um, Mr. K was referencing. On that roof, there's panels, these special panels that absorb sound. They have to cover, I guess, thirty percent of the roof and they absorb the sound. Plus the barrier on the south, that will reduce the noise from existing. As well as decreasing the reliance on the Zamboni and those, those other things that, that produce noise. And then again, with the outdoor lighting, I think what that's speaking to is, you know, having something like, uh, Ludvo and having stadium floodlights and we've. We've recessed, these lights are recessed within the building. Um, and we provide the photometric plan, but we're happy to, to also supply that additional plan. Um, that you would like regarding light trespass. Um, David, was there anything, you're online, I think you wanted to speak, was there anything you wanted to speak to addressing that? David Nardone, if he's still on?
Hi. Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think, um, I don't know if you guys, if you could go back to the existing conditions, kind of aerial that you have there. Uh, you have that plan, right? That's kind of the. Perspective.
Hold on one second, I got it.
I think I, I think I have. Part of the architectural.
There's this one. That has the.
Yes, the. Is there also an asymmetric included or is that the only one that's included?
Sorry, the first one.
Okay, so the, yeah, that, yeah, there you go. I mean, if you look at the south end of the rink there. Um, you know, and the evergreen trees to the left, yeah, there, there, there were evergreen trees planted there. Um, at the time, we, we believe, you know, from looking at what's out there. And I believe that, you know, some of the deciduous that was along the property line shaded out some of the evergreens that were. At the south end of the rink, but there's a mix, you know, there's a, there's a mix today of, of evergreen and deciduous there. You can see, you know, it's quite, it's quite tall and we want to preserve that. And, you know, we can attempt to plant some things in that or around that. Um, you know, to, i- if, um, you know, if it's a, if the buffer is an issue there. Um, you know, we, we walked it early on with, with the whole team and it seemed to be an adequate buffer to screen the building.
Yeah, Commissioner Monahan.
Common and ice rinks to, um, have music playing and also have speakers. Is the plan to mitigate that sound? Music and speakers.
There's no music.
Oh, no. No speakers inside? No loudspeakers? No plan for that.
Commissioner Randolph.
And for the record, if that wasn't hard, there's no speech. Yeah, it wasn't on the record.
I'm sorry. Did you all see this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so it says here, um. No lighting is allowed after dark. So this time of year. We'll be turning the lights out.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to the, um, the, the, the school day, cause yeah, this is our darkest time of year, obviously.
Just restate your name for the record, sir.
Oh, sorry, Margot Pierce. Sorry, head of the school. Uh, our school day runs until about four thirty. So it is getting dark, like particularly in the weeks in early December, it is getting dark by then. And the lights would still be on likely as we're getting the kids across the street. But then we turn them off when the kids are safely.
I think this specific we, was for the, um, skating rink. Says no, the lights will not be, and you've got. Lights here, so. This is, I guess, a deed, it's not a deed restriction.
Not deed restriction.
It constrict, it's a condition for use.
It's, well, it's, it's recorded on the land records is what I would assume.
Yeah.
Um.
But, but, but the question is, are, are you intending to operate the ice rink after sunset?
Uh, like in, in this ti- in this time season, yes, it would, it would operate. But that, again, that's not a deed restriction and I, I don't know the specifics of the requirements of that. If it was something for like, again, outdoor stadium lighting or to light down on the ring. Not, cause there's lighting on there right now. I mean, there's, there's, there's at that property, there's some for the house and things like that. So it's not no outdoor lighting at all, I think, on the property. I think that, um, if we just stuck up light poles to light the. Uh, rink, I think that'd be in violation of that approval. But we're asking for with this is for you, for your approval for this plan, which again, is gonna be dark sky compliant. And we'll make sure it's fully cut off to conform to your regulations now.
Well, I think.
I don't think we're whole, I don't think we're held to that is what I'm saying for like.
Randolph's point though, yeah, you could probably make an argument, you might be able to make an argument that the lighting. Under the canopy is not indoors, but that doesn't address the no after dark activity piece of this. So how would you address that?
Well, I think all we're asking for is with this approval to be permitted to have our games after school. And then conclude in certain parts of the year, it's not an issue, it's light out late, uh, late enough. But I think in, um, in this part of the year, we will have to run the lights. Uh, after, uh, after a certain period of dark and then, and then, you know, and then we, we, we'd be happy to restrict that afterwards.
So I, I get, are, you're asking to extinguish this, to modify the conditions previously?
But keep in mind, you are approving a modification of that right, right now. Or, or if you choose, I'm sorry, if you choose to approve this, that approval would supersede what you have here. So I would say that that, the way that's written is kind of slightly nebulous. It's not particularly clear. If you want to institute an hours of operation limitation. Where you say all outdoor lighting leading to wherever should be extinguished by five.
Uh, just so you know, it's part of the problems we run into a lot of times when we have old approvals, because then you go look at regulations. And there's not a lot in the, the old regulations, they're very simplified. Now, when you look at regulations for today, there's lighting standards and there's, there's very clear. So twenty years from now, you know, uh, M line arrogant two point O can go and look at the regulations. At twenty twenty-five and say, okay, this was spo- like, this is what the standards were gonna be. But I run into this issue all the time with old approvals. They're just not, they're not specific and they don't reference standards.
I think, I think Ms. Harrigan cleared that up, um, that the, uh, any new approval would supersede that. But let me go, uh, Commissioner Capozzi and then.
Yeah, yeah, so, all right, so, uh, as a condition of approval, would you limit operating hours?
To, for the lights, are you saying, for, for the?
In this, this, the neighbors proved the skating rink and now there's incrementalism. To expand this use that violates this initial approval for skating, for this use. Would you consider limiting the hours of operation?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could certainly talk to my client about that and see, you know, um, when these games roughly, roughly end and, and, and when. They put a time on it.
Commissioner Capozzi.
Um, I was a student at Fairfield Country Day when the rink was actually built.
There you go.
So I lived, I lived it, um, including getting, uh, our skates on midday to go shovel off the snow. To assist Mr. Curtis with the Zamboni operation.
Yes.
To protect the ice. My experience as a student was that we had to be picked up. From the parking lot at four thirty. So the athletic program had to cease at four so that we could take showers and be in our suit and tie. For our parents to pick us up at four thirty. So I don't go to school there today. Does the athletic program extend further? Do the people, are people playing sports or are the students playing sports past four P M? Or is it, or they picked up at four thirty? I think that would speak to Commissioner Randolph's question.
Thank you. I'd love to hear more about.
Oh, I will make one other point. Um, when it was snowing or raining, the amount of mud. That we had to track through to get back across the lawn to. The east side of campus was a lot, so it sounds like the, uh, updated plan that conforms with current. Um, drainage standards, uh, would be a welcome. Situation.
Um, the, the general parameters of the school day are as you experienced them. Um, I would say, you know. Hockey players are probably getting off the ice more like ten after four, you know, to get all the teams through, um, but pickup is still four thirty. If we have, um, a home game, sometimes, you know, that if, if the team arrives a little late, that game might go more late. Till four thirty or a little bit later. So I think we're talking about probably that, um. Four to five period. So if we were to name a time, it's, it's hard to, to dictate exactly if you have a, a game happening. But generally, we're taking, and the kids get picked up across the street.
And my, um, understanding is that this opening faces what used to be the head of schools. I don't know if that's your home, but it faces the head of schools home and the baseball field. It doesn't project out into. The, um, are you aligned with, um, Commissioner Randolph's, uh, concern about. Using lighting fixtures that don't.
I understand that, yeah, for sure.
And we could provide, uh, what's the light trespass plan?
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I noticed, uh, the winter solstice on December twenty-first, sunset four twenty-eight. Uh, so.
That's our tough time.
Dark, dark sky compliance, I believe goes, this is, I've been told this goes thirty minutes after.
Yeah, cause there's a period of low and low after. I mean, would it, if we're to set a, uh, specific time of operation, would six P M, uh, be at it? With, uh, when you have late games and so forth.
I think, I think, I think six P M, um, and, 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 yes, for, for the, for, for. And you're saying for the canopy roof, for, for, for the, for the, for the ice rink, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, okay, um, that, edit on your end, Attorney Russo.
That is it, yes.
Okay, uh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Include the public hearing on this matter. Um, and turn to our last two items on the agenda. Before Old Post Road Zone Change Application of R I T L C. Contract purchaser to reown. Or so located to, or Old Post Road to the Design Residence District from the Design Industrial. And. Special Permit Application of R R I T L C. Construct four-two unit townhouse buildings for a total of eight units with associated driveways, parking and landscape areas in a designated industrial district. Sorry, second chair, just. Half an hour. Hello again. Chris Russo with Russo Mizio LLC Offices at Ten Saskoale Road in Fairfield, um, here on, uh, behalf of my boss, Ray Rizzi. Um, who's the applicant, uh, in this, or a member of the applicant, uh, in this application. Um, we are proposing a zoning map amendment and a special, uh, permit application. Um, for the property, um, at two oh four Old Post Road, uh, in order to construct. Four two-unit, uh, townhouses, uh, along with, um, uh, associated site improvements. Um, the site itself, I'll look at this. So the site itself sits to the north of the Old Post Road, um, with the Equinox Gym. Uh, would be on the left side of that plan, um, and Southport Park, uh, abutting to the east. So on, on the right side there, um, you have the post road at a significantly higher grade. To the north, the top of the page, and then you have the Old Post Road, uh, to the south. Um. And, and. I think this application and I'll, I'll go, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll probably make this statement multiple times as we go through it. I think it's, it, it's going to be a benefit, um, to the site, to the neighborhood, but also, uh, Southport Park. Uh, I think Southport Park's one of our more under, underappreciated parks. Um, I have to, I'd never been there my whole life until, um, our office moved down the road. Um, this application would replace an industrial neighbor to the park with a residential neighbor. Um, and I also think it provides a transition, uh, to the Equinox property. Um, as, and frankly, it's a screen between, uh, the park and the Equinox. Um, if you, if you've been by the Equinox at night, it, its lights can be, uh, quite bright if you were traveling. North and you go, once you go under the train tracks and kind of get on that northern side of the train tracks, you, 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 you see those lights. Um, and, and the, this development actually will, um, be, be a type of screen, um, to that site. Uh, to the, to, to those lights. Um, so again, the site's only accessible from the Old Post Road. Uh, due to the extreme grade changes at the far north end of the site. Um, there's no, it's a street line, so it's a street line setback under the regulations. But really, the, there's, there's no way you could ever have a driveway back there. Um, at the moment, the site contains three buildings, two are residential. Those are towards Old Post Road. I'll point them out when I get up to the plans. Um, and then there's a large industrial building in the back. Um, it's an auto body garage, uh, and I think a plumber was in there. Um, at one point, and there's an apartment on top. Um, the existing buildings on the site are non-conforming. Um, the industrial building is actually over the rear property line, um, so it's, it's not even on within its own property. Um, we're going to re, be removing these buildings, um, including the one in the rear and pulling it away from that property line. Um, the existing buildings violate every setback under the regulations in Design Industrial. Uh, so their removal is a significant improvement, um, to the site. Um, this is also a site that has no drainage, um, uh, which is not something you really want on a site like this. Um, and so this will, um, you know, be a tremendous improvement, uh, from that regard. Uh, regarding the zone change, uh, and. Go back to my. Sitting on the floor. So again, this is currently in the Designed Industrial District, which we do not think is an appropriate zone. For this, uh, this site. Um, some of the uses that you can get in industrial, uh, districts. Currently, uh, research laboratories, warehousing, printing establishments, pedaling, uh, gas stations. Auto repair facilities and establishments, uh, for the sale of new or used automobiles. Um, Southport has its industrial past. I've spoken about this. I spoke about it in ninety-five Old Post Road. Um, but I think that's, uh, that's what it is. It's the past. I, I think, uh, there are sites here that remained an industrial that really no longer belong there. Um, its past can be honored at, you know, at an exhibition at the, the Pequot Library. Rather than keeping these properties, um, in the Designed Industrial. The D R D, however, I think is appropriate for this location. And what I wanted to show in this, um, in this snapshot of Southport is the. There's a lot of D R Ds in Southport. Uh, you can see them here, um, Pequot Ave, there's one here on Pequot Ave. There's another one, we just did an application for sixty-five Station Street. There's a D R D that's adjacent, um, to sixty-five Station Street. Um, and then there's also residential developments beyond the D R Ds. Uh, there's Southport Green and then there, uh, you probably remember there was a, a residential development approved at two fifty Pequot Avenue. Which is in the N D D. Um, and so the D R D is something you find throughout Southport. And I think it acts in this case as a great transition between Southport Park. And then, uh, what are the remaining industrial properties, including, um, uh, where the Equinox, uh, is located. The, it's also in conformity with the P O C D. Um, the P O C D noted that there's little appetite from Fairfielders to grow its economy through industrial growth. Um, it highlighted the town has experienced grandness growth through repurposing former industrial sites. Um, and the application, we believe, uh, obviously fulfills this goal. Um, the sites conforming to the D R D standards, um, for law area and access. Uh, furthermore, the P O C D states that new development should not put further demand on already limited on-street parking. Uh, in this particular area of Southport, there is an issue, um, with parking. Um, there's a lot of, there's, uh, I think you actually use a valet service. Um, and so there, you really want a, a development that's appropriately parked. And when you see, uh, our application, we are able to do that. Um, and that, that's really the zone change portion of the application. Um, the special exception portion of the application poses a development, um, which is, um, completely, uh, conforming, uh, to the. Um, um, as to parking into other regulations. Um, special permit, sorry. Did I say special exceptional? Special permit, sorry. Um, uh, so again, for all those reasons, we believe the D R D, uh, is an appropriate, uh, zone designation. For this site. So to run through the site development. First, just want to show you the existing site. So again, Old Post Road, the entrance into the site, you could see there's. An existing, uh, residence building here, there's a garage, there's another residence building here. Uh, and then there's the industrial building in the back, which I highlighted in red, that area that goes over the property line. These buildings would be removed. Another important thing, and, and what I tried to highlight here. Is that's the extent of the impervious area. So the impervious area gets basically right up against the line, particularly down here. Where there's a wetland, um, goes right up against it. So when you'll see our landscape plan. Um, if I was able to kind of just toggle back and forth, you'll see there's a tremendous increase of buffer, a landscape buffer. Um, to the inland wetlands that's there and also to Southport Park. So it's trans improvement. We went to inland wetlands and, uh, received approval, um, for this, uh, project. So the proposal from, uh, site plan, again, this would be under your D R D, uh, regulations as amended. Um, because there was recently a submission that Attorney Rizzi will handle that one, um, for amendments to the D R D regulations. Um, that this would be in conformity with. Um, so what you can see here, we've now shifted the drive aisle over to this side. Get it away from the park and get it away from the wetlands. Um, and then proposed four two-unit, uh, townhomes. Jack Fransen's here, I'm gonna have him in a little bit, just run through his design. Um, building something that's really in character with, with the neighborhood. Um, we worked with the fire marshal on this design. Um, it particularly the width of it to allow a, a fire vehicle to, to come into the site. Uh, it's, it is, they are able, when we were speaking with them, they are able to back out under this design. And so again, we worked with them to, to, um, to, to make sure that they had, uh, access, um, to the site. Um, so. Each unit has its own two-car garage. Um, and in addition, we have several guest parking spaces, um, spaced throughout, uh, the development. Um, for anybody visiting, or if there's, uh, any Amazon truck that pulls in to make a delivery, they can, uh, they, they could pull in here. And, and, and deliver it. Um. So. Again, seen here, tremendous amount of drainage being added to the site. There's none there now. It's a huge improvement. Um, uh, for this site. Sorry.
The access driveways on the left?
Yes, right here. Yep.
Between the Equinox and the buildings.
Between the Equinox and, and the proposed townhouses, yep. Before plans, Jack, do you want to come up and just, as I mentioned, the floor plans, I can, can run through that?
Good evening, I'm Jack Fransen, I'm the architect for the project. And, uh, basically the units are pretty much identical except for the one that's closest to the post road. They all have two-car garages, um. The first floor is around nine hundred and eighty square feet, about half of that is garage. And then the two, two levels above that are also. And then the two two levels above that are also the about nine hundred and eighty square feet. And then there's an attic with an office and a playroom, which is built into the roof line, which is sort of a Georgian revival style roofline with dormers. So the square footage up there is somewhat less. There's also a balcony that overlooks the park because all the livings, the prime living space in these units all looks out at the park and the kitchens and the sort of like busy parts are facing the the road. The other interesting thing is if we could just go back to the site plan. Is that the all the entrances face face into the green area between the buildings. So the front doors to the units are not on the on the parking road. And the one that faces onto the old post road, we made that porch a little fancier, so it kind of looks like a front porch on a house. So this will kind of look like a facade to a house. The other ones are all facing inward, except for the one again, that odd unit that faces kitty corner to the post road. The buildings are divided light windows. There's clambered shingle roof. It's architecturally similar to some of the townhouses that you see in the Southport Green, which is just walking distance away. Like it's a we're very excited about the project.
I don't know much about architecture.
What's that?
The design of the building, what do you call that?
I'd say Georgian revival. Yeah. People would say probably colonial, but you know. Sounds fancier.
The other thing, thanks, Jack. Is there any, is there any, sorry, yeah.
I just wanted to ask how how much, how how many square feet approximately are each?
Total, the units are about three thousand square feet. That doesn't include there's a there's a storage area in the basement that doesn't count. This floor area and there's a mechanical area down there, too.
So they're substantially substantial.
They're nice units. And the other thing I should mention, there's a ground floor bedroom because I'm thinking a lot of these will be people who might need a caregiver at some point. That has its own bath, so nurse or a companion could live on that ground floor, and these all have elevators, unlike some of the townhouses in town that, you know, older couples move in and then a few years later, they find that they can't really sustain climbing the stairs.
So each unit has its own elevator.
These are on the names for sale, not for rat, correct?
Oh, I have a question for Attorney Russo. Can you refresh my memory? We, this is under the new D R D reg that we passed, and is there minimum acreage required? This because it's.
I lowered it down to half acre. So this is thirty two, this is thirty two thousand square feet, so it satisfies that standard.
That's because we we had an exception for D I D.
For D I D.
As opposed to like other.
Yeah, was there's, yeah, there's different.
Explain it for the new commissioners.
Yes, hold on a second.
The minimum acreage for like everything was one acre, right? Except for the D R D.
Right, there's an exception. There's it's ten point six point eight, and it said on all other parcels. And so it was amended to say on all other parcels, each lot should have a minimum of half an acre.
That starts with design industrial.
So and that that would apply to a designed industrial piece, correct?
Okay.
Correct. So this one is not a full acre.
You still have how many units per acre then? Because it was twelve.
So, yeah, so what that did, the the amendment said there shall be one dwelling unit for the first nine thousand three hundred seventy five square feet of lot area and an additional dwelling unit per each additional three thousand square feet of lot area. And if you remember, that was the former D R D density regulation, so it was actually bringing it back to what it had been previously.
So this complies.
So this this would comply. Yeah, that is an eight-unit development.
I forgot to mention one thing that Ray would want us to say is the the Saskenog Conservancy owns the park. And Ray is giving him a water spigot.
Oh, there you go. There we go. Good. And he did, that's you make that a condition of approval.
Conservancy is is not opposing this.
Joel's not here. Unless he surprises me online, Joel is not here. I'm always looking out for him. I'm gonna tag his car at some point.
I'm a member and they didn't eat tomatoes at me at the last meeting.
There's no additional parking for a few of the units, so it's just the garage and that little area.
So, right, so there's.
Overflow parking.
There's, yeah, there's, there's two-car garages, and then there's these guest spaces, one, two, three, four. There's also, you could park in front of the dwellings. These are the ones that are eighteen feet deep. I think these are slightly less than eighteen feet. Eighteen feet deep.
So that complies with the modified parking requirement as well.
Correct. It's it's conforming. So this plan, you know, obviously, this is landscape plan, has all of our planting details. You could see, I mean, if you remember the existing conditions survey, this is a massive improvement along this border, which again, you can see the inland wetland delineated on there. Then also there's a lighting plan. A photometric. Light trespass plan maybe, but a lighting plan. And then there's also, we submitted a a sightline plan to show that we have appropriate sightlines for the adjusting of the of the driveway. And then I think it's just sediment and erosion control. We also submitted a a traffic report, traffic impact statement. As you might suspect, with a project of this small size, it produces almost no traffic. There was four trips in the A M peak, the P M peak, and Saturday peak. The report didn't even take into account credits we would receive for the reduction in trips with the removal of the existing residential dwellings and industrial buildings. So without even taking the credits, it's still only four trips. There was only, the report also stated that there was only one crash in three years, and that actually had to do with the curve of the road. There's nothing with the site. And so with that, I mean, it's it's fairly straightforward application. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any additional questions? All right. That is for your.
Just quick spiel on the standards. Your requirements for approval for a special permit in the design district, that the proposed you shall be permitted use in the district, yes, residential is permitted in the design residential district, that you submit the necessary plans depicting your site development and architectural plans. We have submitted those. That the plan conformed to your standards. We do conform to your as amended designed residence district standards. That all portions of the lot not used for buildings, other structures and impervious be appropriately landscaped. We've done that. We've submitted a landscape plan showing that we will do that. That the development shown on site and architectural plans shall be of such physical characteristics as to harmonize with the neighborhood. I think Jack explained that, how we really feel this is a nice addition to the neighborhood and in line with what you see throughout Southport. And and I also spoke about how we feel that this development is in line with your P O C D. This is a great repurpose of an industrial site. We are starting to whittle down the industrial sites in Southport. Ninety-five Old Post Road was one. It is no longer designed industrial. This is another piece that I think, you know, really should be changed and that this is a reasonable, not that intensive a development of the site. And we'll do a good job. There's actually another rendering here. This is, this is not how the park looks, just so you, there's more trees here. It's not that open. But you can see, you can see the Equinox building here, and you could see how these buildings will screen that. And we, I tried to take a picture of this. That's what it looks like. It's it's actually not as bad as this picture looks. It picks up more light, but it's bright. And so to have that screening that will be will be very helpful. I think. So with that, we respectfully request your approval of this application.
Thank you, Attorney Russo. That will conclude the initial presentation. We'll go to public comment. Again, if you're joining remote and wish to be heard, please sign in in the chat and say so. Otherwise, raise, press the raise hand button. Is there anyone, can't see past this easel. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to be heard in this item? I think so. Anyone joining remote wishes to be heard? Okay, we will close the public comment on this item and any final comments?
No final comments. Thank you. Thank you for your time and request your approval on this application.
If I could just, I just wanted to inform the commission. As you know, you had a member of the flood, I'm going to call it the Flood Erosion Control Board. Is that R for resiliency in there somewhere? Several months ago, you had a board member give you an update on the resiliency, the update to the resiliency master plan that they are working on. As part of that process, we had our consultants identify for us that there is a potential grant opportunity, and I just wanted to provide information to the commission.
This is not related to this.
It's not related to this. Sorry, sorry. And this grant would enable the town to apply for a greenways planning grant to look at the Rooster River corridor. And I've had a conversation with the Conservation Director, Tim Bishop, as well as Becky Bunnell, the Chair of the Flood Erosion Resiliency Board. And what we would like to do for this particular grant application is look at a forty-year planning cycle, forty to fifty year is more realistic, to looking at naturalizing the Rooster River. Rooster River Riverine Corridor. Looking at a long-term acquisition plan, something where we can engage with property owners within that district. This was all something that we talked about within the P O C D planning. I would like to, you know, ask for the Plan and Zoning Commission to think about whether or not you would be willing to offer a letter of support for that to see whether we can get grant funds to really move that initiative forward. And it would be something where we would also look at, as we discussed in the P O C D, doing a passive bike pedestrian pathway at the edges of that, returning some of that area back to natural habitat and providing additional flood storage, which right now we don't have that much in that in that riverine corridor area. So maybe I can add it as an item in the next meeting. The deadline for the grant application is actually going to be mid-January, but I think we'd like to get letters of support.
We can staff draft a letter of support so that consider this, we have something to.
Is there any material that's close to somewhere that you could link us to or send it?
For the grant application, absolutely.
It's part of the overall sort of Rooster River studies to to deal with the drainage issue, right? I've studied that for a long time.
Well, the the prior studies that they've done have been ones where they look at solutions to kind of draw off some of the floodwaters from the Rooster River. This is one where I think this is some of our most populated areas of the community, where additional green space and parkland would be greatly welcomed. So, you know, again, in keeping with the P O C D, we're trying to move this initiative forward.
Commissioner Randolph, will there be a presentation then? Or you're just looking for a letter of support?
We're looking for a letter of support.
I know the incumbent members are familiar with this issue. We've got a lot of new members.
I I can put something together, sure.
Well, I don't think you need to, but
Yeah.
they maybe identify where in the P O C D, because this is in the P O C D there.
Correct.
If you could basically tell them.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. That being the last item, we'll adjourn this meeting.